Hi, good morning. We're about to begin today's work session, which is September twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. If we could stand for the pledge. Tim, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
... of the United States of America. And to the deposit for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and access for all.
And Julie.
Thank you. And Tim Hubbard is running a little late. Hopefully, he'll be able to join us. So we'll see as we go on. Just a couple announcements. We have the fall train station cleanup. It's going to take place on September twenty ninth at eight thirty a.m. If you could bring shovels and gloves. And if you want to gather some of your neighbors and come help clean up the train station. We've planted flowers before, but we're going to continue in our efforts there. You can contact my office at six three one seven two seven thirty two hundred, extension six five four, if you'd like to volunteer or need more information. We also, last weekend, they had the reflections in Granville Park, which was very well attended. And they'll be holding another one of those on October twentieth. So if you haven't seen it yet, or if you would like to come down again, it's a... The event has been going very well, and it's something you really don't want to miss. And then also, Jim, for the country fair, do you want to...
Yes, the country fair, once again, this is our forty-third year this year. October seventh is a Sunday, Sunday for Columbus Day. And come on down to the riverfront. We have a lot of agricultural events and a children's play area and a band show and a lot of vendors. And it's just a real nice family setting. So come on down and just enjoy it. Hopefully, it's beautiful weather, but come on down, enjoy the day.
And then we have the North Fork Breast Health Coalition Walk Around Tanger. That's this Sunday, right, Jim?
That's this Sunday.
This Sunday at eight a.m. And you make one loop around Tanger One, and there's raffles and prizes. And it's just a great day to get together and take a... Take some exercise and join with survivors and caregivers.
Now, do you have to sign up for that, do you know?
No.
You just show up seven...
Yeah.
So eight a.m. on Sunday morning in Tanger?
Eight a.m. and you can sign up, yes.
All right, so for a good cause and get some exercise in on a Sunday morning.
Yes. All right, so we'll start with today's meeting. The first item we have on the agenda is Calverton Manor, proposed change of zone. So if all those involved would like to come up.
One of those trees, but the single setting. We got a chance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Good morning. Hi, how are you?
Hi, Lisa.
We are on camera, so I'm going to have everybody introduce themselves and their affiliation. So we can go. So whoever wants to start.
Good morning. My name is John Wagner. I'm an attorney with Hillman Ballin, Adler &amp; Hyman. I represent Calverton Manor, LLC, which is the owner of the subject property. To my right is Derek Schneider. He's a principal with Calverton Manor. To my left is Ron DeVito, who I think you know.
Mm-hmm.
He's an assisted living person.
Yes.
And I think he's here today to describe some of his concepts for the property.
Just if you guys could talk a little louder. We have two microphones here. It's just not getting captured, yeah?
Is that my... Okay.
Yeah.
And that's... That's my intro.
Okay.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Combrank. I'm an attorney at Timmy Latham here in town. And our firm has been working on this litigation matter for many years. I'm here with my colleague, Jennifer Nagro.
And where is this located?
This is on Route twenty-five. It's actually diagonally across from the road that goes into Squish Splash. It's on Manor Road. And it's just a couple hundred yards to the east of the Charter School and the new Pods complex that was put up there. And it's, you know, it's west of the expressway interchange, which, you know, probably, I would say fifteen hundred to two thousand feet west of that interchange.
Okay. On the west side of Manor?
Yes, it's just on the west...
West.
It's on the, I would say, the northwest corner of Manor and Route twenty-five.
Okay. Lisa, do you want to discuss where we are with the litigation and how the litigation came about so that our new board members understand the long history of this site?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. This litigation began over ten years ago. And it began as a challenge to the town's comprehensive plan from two thousand and three, and then several amendments, zoning changes, that were adopted as a result of the comprehensive plan. And the litigation spanned over many years. There were some attempts at resolving it, but ultimately, the matter went forward in the Supreme Court before Judge Rubellini. And then the matter was finally determined. And ultimately, the town was successful on most of the claims that were brought, not all, but most. And so we are back now today to see if there is any possibility of reaching a resolution of the matter before, I think, coming back with the same proposal that started the litigation many years ago. John, I don't know whether you want to add anything. I'm trying to give the short version of what happened.
And how is the property? It's one large parcel or several broken up parcels and just the zoning on those parcels?
All right, so just to give you some of the context, there are actually two parcels that were originally involved. One starts on Route twenty-five and runs up north from there up to the Long Island Lighting Company right-of-way. You can see on this map I brought with us, which is a subdivision map that is pending right now before the playing board. And then there's another parcel, which you don't see on this map, but there's another parcel on the other side of the Long Island Lighting Company parcel. It's an unusual situation. I think historically, it was one parcel. It went all the way up right across there. And then, at some point in time, Loco acquired this strip for their power lines right through the middle. So there is... This parcel up here right now is zoned APZ, as is a good portion of the property south of the Loco right-of-way. This parcel up here is really not even being discussed today. This is basically, it's isolated from the property to the south. There is, just for your information, there is a deed right-of-way that runs between the two parcels that, again, was created historically, probably when they split the parcel in two. But it's just for access, performing access to get across to the other side.
And you're the owner of the other parcel?
That's correct.
So was this a taking from Long Island Lighting Company? Was it a combination?
You know, I don't know, Councilwoman. It goes back... It goes back to the forties. I would presume, based upon the deeds that I saw and, you know, all these musty old deeds, it was probably done as some kind of a bargain and sale acquisition.
So the deeded right-of-way is from the Long Island Lighting Company to the property owner?
No. What it is, is I think what happened is this strip, the Loco strip, was deeded out to Loco. And at the time, they reserved a right-of-way when they did that to benefit, you know, the two parcels, to allow for cross-access.
Thank you.
So now, what's going on in the property right now? Well...
So I'll just go back. This is APZ, and what is all this zoned?
Yeah, APZ north of Loco. It's APZ on the south side. The entire property is APZ down to a line which is six hundred feet north of Route twenty-five. Everything south of that line is Rural Corridor, RLC.
Okay.
All right. So since all of this has been unfolding, we've actually entered into a relationship with a lavender farmer who's actually out there, you know...
Farming the lavender.
Lavender farming, if that's a verb. And, you know, he's actually installed some of his, you know, plantings and whatnot. He's establishing a farm there. This subdivision that you see in front of you, the purpose of this was to allow for the conveyance of the property that's going to be used for the lavender farm to the farmer. He wants to buy it outright. So that's why...
So that would be lot three on this depiction?
Lot three. And is it lot two as well? Yes. And also the piece across the street, the piece on the other side of that.
This isn't... Is this divided from these properties? This subdivision doesn't exist at this particular time, correct?
It's before the playing board now.
Is this included as a fourth lot in the subdivision or no?
No, the parcel up here is not included in the sub... That's one nor... Just for the record, it's the parcel north of the Loco strip, if you will.
Right, it's an out parcel.
That's not included in the subdivision because it's legally separate already. It's not contiguous because of the strip in between.
Okay.
Okay, so what we're doing is we're dividing up the portions to the south that are all contiguous land.
Okay.
Have development rights been sold on any of this property?
Yes, as a matter of fact. The development rights were sold from the Norvallee portion, which is north of the Loco strip, and also from a good portion of the Southern Lee portion as well. But that's what allows the lavender farm to be there. Because even though development rights are gone, it can still be used for agricultural purposes.
Yes.
So that's what's going on. I mean, it was... I think that was the intent of APZ, was to have, you know, some kind of farming operation. That's what we have there. We are left... Calverton Manor is left with the... What to do with the property along Route twenty-five?
So that would be lot one and two?
That's correct.
The one and two or just one?
One is the one that we'll be holding on to. And I'm not sure why lot two is separate like that.
Because lot two has both the APZ and the... I'm sorry, lot two also has the development rights attached to it. The twenty-four development rights were from this property and the property to the north of the Liper. And lot two is shown separate because that both has the APZ and the development rights associated with it.
But this whole part, lot two, is APZ, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to...
Yeah, lot one, it's not that clear here, but lot one includes all of the RLC and then a small strip of APZ, for error purposes. You never know. So basically, you know, we have the RLC zoned property to the south, which would be retained by, even after the sale to the lavender farm, that would be retained by Calverton Manor. And the hundred-dollar question is what to do with an RLC zoned property? Retail is not allowed there under the use restrictions in the code, very limited range of uses. So we were exploring, you know, possibilities for that property. And Mr. DeVito has expressed some interest for a while in actually doing something on this site. The comprehensive plan dating back to two thousand and three contains some very supportive language in it for assisted living facilities. It identifies that there is a dearth of assisted living in the town, even though there's a substantial senior population that has need of those services. So... But it doesn't answer the question, you know, what can be done about that?
I personally am happy to see Mr. DeVito here. And assisted living is very much needed in this town. I voted no against the settlement and to pursue the litigation because I didn't want to see commercial sprawl west of the Long Island Expressway. But I'm happy to say that we were successful in the zoning. And I think this is a perfect place for an assisted living because it's close, connected to the sewers and right at the terminus of the Long Island Expressway. So it's easily accessible to visitors and employees of an assisted living. So I'm happy to see all of you here.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. And I agree with you.
Shocking, shocking. Okay, we're done.
No, I think it is a very good place for it.
East and west of this parcel is... How far does the RLC run east of this parcel?
The... Well, I think the RLC... That's a good question. I think the RLC may go just a little bit more to the east. This is some kind of a farm parcel.
Yakubowski's.
Yeah, and then after that, is it just that one parcel next to it that's RLCD?
It's a limited strip here. It's unusual. Just to give you some of the background, because I was involved all the way back then, I think the original concept in the comprehensive planning was that they were going to have RLC running along all of twenty-five A, right down to the Calverton Hamlet Center, almost at the... Where twenty-five A splits off and heads northwest. But for whatever reason, they decided to break up that strip. So there are actually two RLC strips. There's one basically across from where the old Brumman site was. And that comes to an end. And then there's a big area where it's not RLC. And then you have another limited strip in this area. So it's kind of, you know, standing there. We always had an issue because at the very final... The final modifications that were made to the comprehensive plan right before it was adopted, for example, they saw that they would allow retail, RLC on Main Street in Jamesport. And I thought, all right, that's a great idea. It'd be nice if they allowed it here too, but they didn't.
I don't... Yeah, I don't think they allowed the retail on the RLC in Jamesport. I think they have a Hamlet and a... They have a Hamlet Center and a Village Center in there where they do have retail, but it's not in the RLC.
And if you're within a quarter of a mile of the Hamlet Center, then you're permitted additional uses by special permit.
All right.
Yeah.
They did separate it out, though, for some reason. I don't know whether it was because people expressed an interest in that from the Jamesport town.
I think part of it, what was pre-existing there, I think there was some retail development there already when they were doing it, I believe, so right in Jamesport, in Jamesport there, that would be...
I believe so. I'm looking at our website and the planning department's subcategory, and they show that the RLC runs from... And again, you know, this is part of our discussion. The RLC runs from Manor. So Manor would be the easterly boundary of it. And it runs to Edwards on the west side, so...
And it's just on the west side?
That's what I'm...
All right. So it does stop at this property here?
Okay.
Okay. And then, like I said, down the road, it stocks up again.
Further west.
Further to the west.
Yeah.
You were the lucky ones, only on the north side, from Manor to Edwards.
Right, right. Now we got captured. But...
Well, RLC recognizes assisted living?
Actually, no. No, it does not, no. In fact, it described... RLC is described as having very limited, which is a very apt description of it.
Well, I think that's the part of the rural. The rural corridor, I mean, that's...
Yeah. It made a lot of... Maybe it made sense when the town was much more agricultural than it is now. What's happened over the last ten years has been a lot of changes in this particular area here, actually on the south side of the road. I remember when the Charter School was just, you know, the historical building that was there, and I was thrilled to see if they reopened it and had children in there again, learning. It was a great thing because I used to drive past there every day.
It was the old Calverton School.
That's right. It was one of four, I think, that were throughout the town. So, you know, they reopened that. It was a good thing. And but then, you know, the Crossroads Restaurant that used to be there, that fell on hard times. And now it's something totally different, some kind of...
But that's still not in the rural corridor. That was never in the comprehensive plan and the update as rural corridor.
Yeah, the rural corridor is only on the north side, but it's sort of part of the character of the strip because, you know, it's both sides of the road gives you a sense of the area. So when you start at Edwards Avenue, you come east, you know, the first thing you have is the old Crossroads, which the building is still there. Then there's a gas station and Sea Store that has been established within the last ten years. Then comes the Calverton School, the Charter School, which has been substantially expanded now with other buildings. And then you have the new Pods Storage Building, which, you know... When that went up, it sort of really changed the character of the area in terms of appearance and whatnot.
But only on one side of the street?
Only on one side. But, you know, what I was used to seeing, you know, the horse farm and, you know, breathing the fresh air, and now you see that building is there. But either as it may...
And I think planning did a good job of the setbacks on that. There is a large buffer there, so it is not budding up on the streets, the new development, you know, Pods that is here, there. The Charter School is also set back quite far from the street. There is quite a large buffer there from those.
So, you know, I'm trying to figure out a way to make something that works for everybody at this table, including Mr. DeVito. And, you know, he's expressed interest in this property over the years. I know he has a pending application in the town north of what we used to call the Riverhead Center.
And that was a big problem because it was farmland, and it was core soils, and we didn't want to lose that as farmlands, and we didn't want to expand and congest an area, especially at the intersection of Mill Road and Middle Road, where, you know, there's so much traffic and accidents at that intersection as it is, and with ambulance services and other things that an assisted living would need. I didn't think it was an appropriate location, but I like this one.
Well, I mean, the application is still pending, but I think the... Correctly or wrong, but I think the hope and the prospect here is that we would have assisted living here in lieu of the other location. But, you know, it's a nicely located parcel. I think it answers that gap in the comprehensive plan as far as what do we do about getting more assisted living? The only zone in the town that permits assisted living is the RC zone. And the areas that are zoned RC right now are very limited. And maybe I missed something, but it looks like the only thing I could find was north of Middle Road, you know, north of the hospital area. So it's like a confined area, and that's all basically been built out. So where do you put assisted living? The only way to do it is to create new RC, so...
Or a floating zone.
Well, true. I like floating zones, but right now, it doesn't exist in the code. That's another option. And then, you know, you could apply the land wherever you want, including on this property. So anyway...
I like it on this one. I can't say that there's other rural corridor properties in a floating zone that I would like to see an assisted living pop up on, but for this particular one. Well, it wouldn't necessarily be a rural corridor, but my question is this lot here?
Mm-hmm, right.
That... What is the thoughts with this? If you're retaining the development rights on this because it's APZ, you can put other things there. So what is the thought on that property?
That's being sold to the lavender farmer.
So lot one and two would both be sold?
Yes. Yes.
Two and three.
Two and three.
Two and three.
So that the farm will be extensive down to that, you know, those two parcels together. And then all we're talking about is lot one.
I know that there is the Calverton Civic Association. I don't know if you've personally reached out to them. I've spoken to them also. I hope that you've connected with them. They seem to be... The response I've gotten from them is that they would be in favor of an assisted living there, so...
That's my understanding, too. I think it was presented to them, you know, in concept.
Years ago.
And they were very supportive of it.
But recently, have you reached back out to them about this?
I don't even think they're meeting anymore.
Yes, they...
Not recently.
I think that that might be something... A wise choice to reach out to them also on this.
Mm-hmm.
And like I said, I know that you have had this idea floating around. I have reached out to them. They seem to be very supportive of it. But I think coming from you would probably be the best to answer their questions.
Your mention of a floating zone is intriguing to me.
I'm sure it is.
I personally drafted a few floating zones around the county. I know how they work. They can be very flexible.
Well, we have the community benefit is a floating zone that we have, correct?
I think the answer is... I don't know right now. I'm having a blank. Because I was actually...
That is a floating zone.
I was actually thinking that if this stays the way it is and there is not a floating zone, there's no excuse for a barium because I believe that the assisted living, as far as a minimum of fifteen acre lot size.
Right.
And you're not reserving fifteen acres with this configuration, so that is a stumbling block in.
That's one of the reasons the floating zone concept is a good fit.
So I don't want to defer, otherwise my mind's not clicking right now because I'm focused on that.
That's fine.
You know, from a practical standpoint, if, you know, not only on this parcel, but other parcels are identified in the future as being possible assisted living sites, a floating zone that is tailored to that type of use.
That's what the community benefit zoning is. It's tailored to one particular piece of property, so...
I mean, as you all know, I mean, there are price points that are achieved in all of these developments beyond which, you know, the development is not economically feasible. So you can structure a floating zone to identify what those points are. And you control the density, but you also allow a viable project to go forward. So that would be one concept. I mean, we're talking...
Well, what is your concept for here? Why don't you present that?
It's basically, generally, people refer to the kind of facilities that I develop and operate and manage as assisted living facilities. However, the state of New York has a whole set of regulations about the kinds of facilities that serve the senior population between purely independent living, caring for purely independent living seniors on one end, and the nursing home type of venue on the other end. So in between that is assisted living, but what the state calls adult care facilities. There's a number of different categories of adult care facilities. An adult home is what is the basic licensing that is required. And that calls for seniors who need some basic assistance with their daily living activities to more serious matters with functional limitations and so forth. And then that category can be further certified for what's called a special needs assisted living residence, which is for people who are cognitively impaired. And that includes Alzheimer's, other forms of dementia, and things like that. We at Concordia, which is our brand name, specialize in memory care. And in addition to that, there's other benefits that the state has in different forms that basically helps every category of seniors who are not qualified for nursing homes and who are not living independently. So that's basically what assisted living is in the state of New York. It is... What we strive for is buildings that are very home-like in nature. We've learned from a marketing point of view that families who have loved ones who need some assistance want to retain that home-like atmosphere. So all of our design, all of our exteriors are designed to look like a home, as opposed to more institutional-like facilities, like hospitals and even most nursing homes look fairly like...
So not a square building?
Not a square building, but... So it has windows, shutters, and porches, and outdoors, and so forth, so like a home with numerous dwelling units. So that's basically the concept. For a site like this, there's some special considerations. If there's a sewer connection, and I'm not aware of it, there is, I think you mentioned...
You'd have to bring it down. You'd have to bring it down from east of the expressway.
Well, that's a good thing.
And that's what you were proposing for the property on Mill Road and Middle Road, was to bring it down from Route fifty-eight down there.
That's right. So that's an important part of developing these facilities, to have the right and the opportunity to treat and dispose of sanitary waste and to have water, which is very important, and other utilities, electricity and so forth. But I'm sure all of that is in that area. So in that sense, this site is very good for that. It's also good because what we like from a marketing point of view is to have rebuilt facilities on locations that are highly visible and very... With a lot of exposure because that gives everybody in the area an opportunity to actually see what's going on. And that... So we like the idea of visibility. So Route twenty-five in that area is a big advantage to being able to successfully market this facility.
I just... I have one reservation with that, and I think I've expressed this before, is that you'll remain in a rural corridor. And I think there needs to be some consideration to maintaining that with some buffers.
Yeah, the previous submission for the settlement showed a large buffer along twenty-five for the campus-style retail and housing units. So I think that, you know, this being zoned RC and then the development rights from this piece going over here, seeing as this is zoned APZ and the development rights are intact, would probably help you with a zoning board application. But I can't speak for the zoning board, but for not needing the fifteen acres. But I can't speak for the zoning board, but for not needing the fifteen acres. The other property you were proposing, I think it was twenty-five acres, correct? So you're going to be able to do all of that on this lot and still maintain a significant buffer, a landscaped buffer from the assisted living?
No, the, the Mill Road project involved, its size allowed us to do assisted living, but also independent living, which is always a good supplement if you have enough space to do that. And so independent living seniors would live in either cottages or villages.
Or couples.
Couples and so forth. With the community building, with all sorts of benefits and so forth. And then the assisted living would be a separate building. But here, there's not enough space to do that, so that it would have to be purely assisted living. And it's, it's a good site. There's, I bought something to look at as far as floor planning goes and so forth, if you wish to see that. And that would work very well in this site.
I think there was also some question about not having the curb cuts on twenty-five, but having the curb cuts come from Manor.
I would not like that.
I know.
I would not like that.
I'm sure.
It's all, it's very important for people that, especially the loved ones who's, that the families who want to place their loved one, be able to see what I call the wow factor, you know? Beautiful landscaping at the entrance, a driveway with a port cachere and with a beautiful lobby and a fireplace and all of that. And if you start trying to go from here, it's very confusing to get over here where the entrance has to be.
Well, not really. People are finding the lavender farm very easily. And I think, you know, you have to remember, the wow factor for a lot of people in Riverhead are the trees and the, and the rural corridor. So I think that that needs to be taken into consideration.
And it's also, it's a terrible intersection. And we have, we do have a traffic light there, so it would be easily accessible.
I mean, Manor Road and twenty-five.
I mean, twenty-five at that intersection, especially in the summer with all the people trying to get to Splish Splash and to the outlets. It's, it backs up pretty far. And I would be concerned about people headed eastbound making a left-hand turn into the development from twenty-five. Just something for you to consider and something that I'm sure our planners will look at also. I think for a safety factor and for also convenience for the visitors to the assisted living, you would probably want to have them come in at the traffic light on Manor.
I think for the traffic light, right?
But that's something that planning, that's what I'm saying. So it's easy to get in as opposed to the curb cut, any curb cuts that would be on twenty-five.
Because it's going to take forever for people to turn left to get into here. It's only one lane on twenty-five. And if you were proposing that, then the state might make you widen the road down there.
There's a turn lane there.
But only to get onto Manor, not.
Yeah, but it goes back for a quarter mile.
Anyway, I, I.
It's definitely a traffic problem there. I mean, if you're going to study, you need to definitely look at the times of day that people are going in Splish Splash and coming out. It is, I'll agree with Jody, it's always backed up there.
I suspect though, for the limited sites to that RC zone, you're always going to have a traffic problem.
It's pretty significant.
It's a congested area right there, just because of the development that is, has happened.
How, how big a development are you looking at?
About, little under a hundred thousand square feet.
Because you said this is strictly assisted living, this is not independent, this is just.
Strictly assisted living. Yeah, there's no room to do both, because they have to be separate.
So pretty much the, the clients that are there are, are there. And the traffic would be people visiting.
The vehicular traffic in and out is very limited. Mainly for the staff and visitors, and that's about it.
And then you have food trucks coming in, you have any supplies, you have, you're not doing linen and stuff there. That would be coming in and out.
We do that on site.
You do that on site, okay. And then my other question, I know that it's always a concern and it's always raised, especially with an assisted living. Are you considering, I know that these can be very expensive. Are you considering to make any of it affordable, assisted living?
What I do in life is affordable throughout the state.
And it's one of the requirements in the RC zoning.
Right. When, when the town did the, the addition to the RC code, they put in provisions recognizing affordable projects. And right now, the, the affordability is defined as a hundred and ten percent of Suffolk County's median income. But as I made my way through everything in the planning department, especially on the Mill Road piece, I was asked to change the definition of affordability to Riverhead's median income. And I agreed to do that. I think it's very sensible, because that's my market is Riverhead.
And where are you, where are you obtaining Riverhead's median income? What's your source, source for that?
The United States Census Bureau.
Okay, you use Census Bureau, okay.
The last time I looked, it was about sixty-three thousand.
I think it was fifty-three, fifty-eight maybe.
It went down, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it still at sixty-three this year? I think it went up to sixty-four, five or something like that, for work for an individual, okay.
Yeah. So, so that's how we judge affordability. And that, by the way, is unlike almost everything else that's being done on Long Island, where monthly rates are extremely high. So, for example, seven thousand, sixty-eight hundred, seventy-four hundred a month is fairly routine west, in western Suffolk and Nassau County. But I am dedicated to affordability, because east of, everything east of William Floyd Parkway, the demographics are such that affordability is really, there's no, no market for it. There's no facilities for it, even to the west. So I, I think that the important need is affordability, and that's what I'm willing to do. But, but there's always problems because of the cost of water and sewer and the cost of this and the cost of that. So I walk a tight rope to begin with about being able to have successful operating margins, which lenders look at, right? And the value is based on NOIs and things like that. So it's, it's a real challenge in life.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I think, I think using the Riverhead, Riverhead income, I think is very admirable, because the Suffolk County is much higher. Even if you're at a lower, if you're under a hundred and ten percent, you're still, you know, it's still not affordable necessarily to the folks that are living here in Riverhead. And I think a lot of people in Riverhead would like to see their family very close by and affordable.
Yes.
That was one of the requirements.
Yes, that's right.
Well, the, 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 people that do have to put their parents or their loved ones in those cares have to go elsewhere, which of course are much more than.
Right.
Should.
And, and some of that is already happening, migration from the east to the west, but, but in a very limited way because of the expense for assisted living in other parts of Suffolk County.
And just another question. So you're, you're only do the, the, the special, special care. You're not looking to have any medical facilities in there? Or how's any, how's any clients that would be sort of fall into that nursing home criteria? So you're not looking to have a combination of anything or move to a combination?
We're not allowed to.
Okay, that's what, that, that's not.
The licensing regulations don't allow us to do extreme functional limitations or people who are in need of twenty-four hour nursing care.
Okay. So the hundred and ten thousand square feet that you're proposing, I know that when we were discussing the other assisted living, we were talking about a triage center, so that if somebody were to have a fall, they could go to the triage rather than calling an ambulance or going to the hospital. So are you proposing anything like that within the building?
Yes, all of my projects have a wellness program. I also have a daycare center within the facility. And I also have a respite program, which is for families who have their loved ones living with them, but they may want to go on vacation or they're not free, maybe both husband and wife work. So we have a daycare center to have for that. We have a respite for if they want to go away for two weeks, we'll take care of your mom or dad for you and so forth. The wellness program is, I have talked quite a bit years ago with Paconic Medical Center about a wellness center, which is mainly for preventive medicine. Exercise being an extremely important part of a senior's being well. Flexibility training, things like that. Certain ways to, all of that means, and the hospital would be a big help to have doctors available for that purpose. So it's very popular in the facilities I've done. It's very popular among seniors.
And how many, how many people are you looking to, to support there?
A hundred and thirty-five.
And, and when you have a hundred and thirty-five, what kind of staff are you?
Let me, let me qualify that. We have what's called companion suites for people who are related, want to be together and so forth. And there's, it's one unit, but it's two individuals, all with a separate room and separate bathroom and a best view that is sort of a sitting area. So about ten percent of the units would have a double occupancy. So it's a little bit more than, so long as we have access to sewer connection, we can go up to about a hundred and forty-two actual individuals, but no more than a hundred and thirty-five units.
And how many do you anticipate would be employed with this type of operation?
Around a hundred people. I think the last time we figured all this out, of course, was for a larger population, but just for the assisted living, I think we're around a hundred and five. It's three shifts, it's a twenty-four hour kick.
Those are high-paying jobs, nurses and.
Yeah, parns and LPS and.
Did you want to show us anything else or present anything else?
As good as you'd like, I had to burrow along, have some ideas.
There have been several proposals over the years, and I'm happy to see. I think that, in my opinion, this would fit nicely.
While he's doing that, just to answer your question, the community benefit isn't overlay.
It's an overlay zone, right, yeah.
This is one example of exterior.
It only fits on one lot in town.
And there's all sorts of different ways to present this facility. It gets a home-like setting with windows and porches and so forth. So this is just one example of the predominantly stone exterior. But I would sit with your planning department to try to figure out what, what is really the best materials to use for this community. Sometimes it's, it could be just carpentry, shingles and so forth. Sometimes stones would work. So it's, this is how we try to, very important that this, that what you see is a pleasant-looking experience, that it doesn't look like some jailhouse or something. So this is an example of that, I wanted to show you that.
It's a pretty building. And it looks like it would, that would make a perfect entrance off of Manor Road.
Because it's in line.
It smells like lavender.
And I just brought this along, this is another project I'm doing, but I think this same floor plans would be perfect for this site. So this is the entrance here, this is the port cachere. And this is the wellness program over here, and this is the daycare center over here. The dining is back here. And these wings are, these wings are for residential dwellers. Excuse me. So this, the width of this fits perfectly within the site, and as does the deck.
They're just saying, if you could just point that towards the camera there for a second, because they're filming it. Thank you. Good job.
You make a good banner.
You could have put it in front of your face.
And you're looking two stories?
Let's show the other one.
Three stories.
Three stories. Do you know what height at the three stories?
It's about ten feet.
So thirty?
Yeah.
You're looking to say under thirty-five?
About thirty-five.
It looks like you had an architectural element with that roof on top, which is probably bring it up to around sixty.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any comments that anybody else would like to?
I, I'd just add that, I mean, part of my goal for today was to get the sense of the board, because it's something that, that people are interested in. If it is, if it's something you can walk forward together on, then, you know, there are mechanisms to make it happen.
Could you speak a little louder? The microphones are barely picking up.
We're getting arrows. Getting an air traffic controller back there.
Same problem you had in front of the television.
I'll speak to the dial on the table. No, no, I might, to reiterate, I mean, my, my goal was to get the sense of the board today, to see if there's, if there's, you know, a ground swell of, maybe not a ground swell, but at least a ripple to push this ahead in, in, in a positive direction. If it is, then the rest is detail work. It's mechanism, it's, it's, it's process. That, that's what people like me and the young people at the table do. We can figure it out, whether it's a floating zone or an overlay, as, as Town Attorney mentioned. These are all variations of getting things done in a way that works for the community and, and for the landlord. So I, I'd love to hear, I mean, I've heard, I think I'm getting some positive vibes here today, if, if that's something that we can do. And also bearing in mind what Mr. DeVio needs in terms of his, his financing and, and his viability, his economic viability, we, we could structure something to make that happen. It's, it's doable.
Well, I think, like you're saying, the devil is in the details. I guess from the board, would there be any opposition for them to keep presenting forward with this? Is there anything you would like to three stories, if that's an issue for anybody? Or to just kind of say, this is not something that we want to, want to take any further look at?
I think at the Calverton Civic Association, I was at the meeting when they were, when they were supportive of this, and then there have been several proposals that have been shot down since then. So I think if they are still convening, meeting up with them again would be something that would be a good idea. And then I would sit down with the town attorney or Lisa and your attorney and try and figure out which would be the best way to go, whether it be an overlay or whether it be a zone change to the RC zoning.
So that's a yes, right?
Yeah, I'd say move forward with it. We definitely need one in town. I mean, we have a, we have a very big senior population in town and they want to keep their loved ones close.
Definitely a yes from there.
Well, I've, I've always been in favor of a senior, of assisted living. And, no, I was always very savvy about that particular parcel. I never, never wanted fifty-eights to sprawl west of that terminus, which was a lot of issues that we dealt with ten years ago. But this certainly is a use that needs the many outweigh the needs of the few. And I think that this is a good use of that property, especially if you're going to be enveloped with the lavender farm around it. So it, it looks like it's going to be very tastefully done. I think it's, I think the need is there, and I think the hurdles aren't going to be with this board. I think the hurdle is going to be with expansion, sewer district, key money, all that stuff that you have to work out financially, but I think it's good.
Well, we absolutely need a assisted living facility. I'm well aware of that. I'm not thrilled with the three stories we're dealing with.
The, just to let you know why it's three stories? Because of this size of the property, I need at least a hundred and forty residents for operating margins, right? So the fewer the residents, the, the lower your NOI, right? Because you don't get the revenues. The revenues are hopefully about two-thirds greater than the, about a third greater than the operating expenses. So when you go for financing for these facilities, very difficult, by the way. Lenders are very rigorous about financing these facilities, because it's not like an apartment, house dwelling. It's, you also have that people that know how to manage the facility, so there's a lot of scrutiny. The value, they don't want loans more than sixty-five percent of loan to value. The value is based on the NOI and your capitalization rates and so forth. So if I don't have about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty people producing those revenues that we will have at the, at the affordable rates, it doesn't work financially for lenders.
So then the other question just would be, what are your options? You know, this, these are obviously lots, sizes that you've drawn up, right? So is there? So is there any ability to increase the size of lot one to not go to three stories, but do it at two stories?
Then you're cutting into the agricultural protection side.
That, that piece is under contract to, to sell to the lavender farmer, lot two. Lot two.
So, but that was, that's your, that you own that, correct?
No.
But we own that. So, but, but so, so there is, I mean, there is...
We own it now, but we're under contract to sell it.
Yeah.
We're under contract to sell that to the lavender farmer.
Okay.
Yeah, this piece is.
Yeah.
This is all that's available.
Yes, correct.
I don't, visually, I don't think three stories would have the obscene.
Just that it's beautiful. I mean, we're always trying to retain the beautiful look of our farm fields and our agricultural area. And obviously you have some stunning views right there by you with the lavender farm maturing soon.
Yes. Well, you can also, as, as you know, you can do a lot with landscaping and screening.
It's kind of a, it's on a hill anyway.
And to screen the height.
Throw in a hill and it swoops down anyway, so you're probably only going to see the top of the building anyway.
Besides downtown, where there isn't any property available for an assisted living, I think this is the perfect location for it.
So I think you have your answer. You know, I think, you know, I think we've made some points here as far as Manor Road, screening on twenty-five. So, and then to reach out to the Calverton Civic. I would wait, you know, you also have the, the Wading River Civic there. I would try, we have a list of the civics contacts in my office if you'd like to contact them. I think there's no harm in, in contacting them and holding a community meeting to express what it is that you want to do there and, and get some feedback. Because I'm sure some people in the community, before you come up through the planning board, would probably be, benefit all of you.
Yes.
So.
Well, we, we appreciate your feedback and, and your suggestions. I think, I guess what I'm hearing is the next step is to go out to the civics and just get their, get their buy-in.
This has a very large advisory committee on this.
Get their buy-in as well.
I think, I think that's a very good point, the senior, the senior advisory committee.
Now, would you like us to come back to you after, after we've done that and report back, if you will, or no?
Would like an invitation, how's that? We can come to the meeting, how's that?
Right.
That might be, that, that might be, we can send, we can send, yeah.
But I think if you have full support for just saying, something there, those meetings, then, you know, working out the details between our outside counsel and our attorney and you and coming up with a plan would be the best time to come back and present to us.
I think we can work simultaneously on the details that John mentioned about how, assuming that this does move forward, how we could accomplish that within the framework of what's happened so far and where we are today.
And we got it, we, yeah, and I, I think the way this economy really is, well, we better do it quickly because those numbers are going to change within two years.
Yeah, the rates, the borrowing rates are going up.
Yeah, they are definitely going up.
And it's going to be an increase in the sewer flow, which we hadn't anticipated. So we need to make sure that we are reserving that sewer flow for the project if you want to moving forward.
It's about, this project with the hundred and thirty-five units could be about fifteen thousand gallons a day.
And that's it?
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Maybe sixteen, somewhere in that range.
That's with the sub county department house services for a hundred and thirty rooms?
Yeah, the hundred and thirty-five units I could do without a sewer connection with onsite chromaglass system. Although the Department of Health, County Department of Health isn't, they don't favor chromaglass at all the way they used to. They're, they're suggesting different ways, but very interesting ways if the sewer connection wasn't available.
It's at the hotel, just on the east side of the expressway.
Say again?
It's at the hotel, on the east side of the expressway.
Yeah.
And at, and coming into Tanger one, so.
Quite a distance.
It is quite a distance. But that's up for you, that's, that's for you guys to look into and come back and, you know. All right, so I think, thank you very much.
Maybe, maybe those people from able to move in.
That's why we're doing this.
Oh, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks to see you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good to see you.
Yes, good to see you.
I love that one. Thank you, John, thank you.
It's lovely to you. Like it's finally something I can live with on the property.
It is, but if I, if I should go with the camera.
Three, two, one, let's just go lavender.
East to west, this east to west, two and three.
Oh, two and three, oh.
Yeah.
And then that lot one is what we were talking about.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, okay. That was a big part of our life, if you remember. I know. A lot of investment too.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, we're just going to continue with our meeting. Bye, guys, have a good day.
No, I'm fine.
All right, nice seeing you.
Bye-bye, nice meeting you.
Hi Lisa, good to see you.
Yes, thank you. Take care. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good job.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to move on to our next item.
I know how you feel about those little chairs, so. I grabbed it because you weren't here, but I figured I'd, you know. I'll steal it. Yeah, I figured.
All right, here we go.
All right.
Summer wind, blowing in.
It's the summer wind, is it?
All right, we're moving to our next gender item, which is a special permit for a real life church.
Real life?
I knew you were going to say something.
Oh, here we are again.
Yes.
Real life.
That joke's getting old.
It's all right, I hear it repeatedly.
It's not a real good joke.
Do you?
I do.
I read this already. Did everybody get a copy of Briggs?
Yes.
Yes.
We emailed it, distributed it.
Yeah, we read it through the email yesterday.
So, yeah, we're just here to update the board on the review process for the real life church of Wading River special permit and to get the board's direction for the next step required in the application. The last time the application was presented by the town, to the town board was May tenth, twenty eighteen. And members of the board had expressed concerns about traffic congestion at the intersection of twenty-five A and Dogwood Drive, Wading River. I went ahead and looked at the expanded environmental assessment form, which was prepared for Benetia Square, which was a proposed development on the south side of twenty-five A, directly adjacent from the intersection from Dogwood Drive. The EEF contained the traffic impact study, which analyzed the existing traffic at that intersection. And those, those traffic volumes were measured during February and March of twenty sixteen. They were measured during midday and PM peak hours on a typical weekday and during the midday period on a Saturday. The results of the traffic...
And the midday on Saturday was in February and March also?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the results of the traffic study basically identify that the intersection is currently experiencing extreme congestion delays during those peak time periods. I had had conversations with the applicant, Pastor Matt. I had recommended that he contact the engineering firm that conducted that traffic impact study, just to not start over from square one. And I had advised him to have them analyze the traffic situation during the church's anticipated peak hours, which would probably be from about eight AM to one PM on a Sunday. The applicant did reach out to the engineering company, he received a scope of work, what would be involved with it, and a cost associated with the project, which would be approximately three thousand dollars plus additional costs if they needed to attend hearings. In an email from the traffic engineer to the applicant, the engineer said that the expansion of the church is not generating many new trips as compared to what's currently existing at the intersection. So, you know, basically at this point, I wanted to get the board's opinion. You know, they analyze certain times which are not coinciding with the church's peak times and whether the board feels it's appropriate and, you know, prudent venture for the applicant to have that supplemental traffic impact study prepared so that the board can make a decision or if the board desires another direction to go.
Well, I think that the expansion of the special permit that they're getting now is to accommodate what they already have.
That is correct.
So they may, and, you know, God willing, increase their membership somewhat with the new parking lot and building. But I, I don't foresee any additional people using that intersection that aren't using it already.
And there is, I, I mean, it is worthy to note that during their services, there are people pub, parking in the public right of way along Dogwood Drive, which does create hazardous situations, kids crossing the street. You know, there is potential for accidents, so.
And that coupled with the fact that there are other egresses into the Wading River community other than twenty-five A from that location.
And that would, we had kind of toolled around with it internally about maybe making it a right out only from the church. I didn't think that was a really good move, just because you'd be inherently directing the traffic for the residential neighborhood, you know, it just...
Right, right hand turns out there was a lot of problems. The people that are going to be heading east are going to go that way through the neighborhood. The people going west, for sure, are going to go to twenty-five A, so.
Is that what's occurring now?
We, we have, the majority of our families that attend the church are actually coming from the west. So as they're leaving, they're making a right onto twenty-five A. I, I went through it last night, so I'd be best prepared. We have, in accordance with our attendance rules, about ten families in total that would be coming between the two services that either live east of the church or southeast of the church, in which they would be making a left onto twenty-five A during either one of those services coming out of church. In, in our observation, as I've asked my officers, the board members, myself to do during this time, over this time period, the past couple of months, is to get an understanding of how many cars we are having in our lots at the time being. And we're averaging about twenty-five, twenty-seven cars between both, you know, during each service. Also ask them to observe how many cars are piling up at that intersection at any time in which we let out. The thing that is maybe different about our church than others is that the way in which our church lets out, it's not as if church ends, everybody gets in their cars and they're gone. There's a lot of hanging around, there's a lot of leaders that are staying behind. And so it's a trickle effect of cars leaving. And at most, we have maybe two to three cars that are sitting at that intersection. And three would really be pushing it at any one time, leaving to make a turn at that intersection.
So my question is, is, is you're looking to go from, I think, thirty to ninety spots?
Sixty-five, I believe it is.
Thirty.
I thought it was up to sixty-five.
Well, they have the satellite parking area across the street, which it's about twenty-five spots.
Very clear.
The current lot that they have on their main parcel, nothing's delineated. I mean, you can maybe fit nine, ten cars. I mean, it's not a, it's not a huge lot.
Yes.
The church, with their expansion, would be proposing sixty-eight on their main parcel. Which is, it meets the code, it meets the requirements, and it would take all those cars that are parking on the road and allow them to safely come off of the right of way.
And it was required by code to move all of our parking onsite rather than the satellite. The satellite is just the, the extra to meet code of one to three, three, for every three seats, one parking spot. We had to have that amount of parking spots on the, the existing lot where we're building.
See, this is what I'm not quite understanding, is, is you're, you're, you need, you're, you're having the seats for people coming in.
Correct.
And so it would be the seats that will fit, that you need all of these parking spaces for. But then you don't have the cars, you, you're never going to have that many cars there.
Well, there's, there is...
But I'm just kind of like, you know, if you're not adding, if you're adding more seats, I'm assuming that you're going to expect more people.
I can't, I, I would never say that we wouldn't grow in any measure. We have grown since we've been there.
Correct.
But the reality is, is the reason for our building project is because we've outgrown our space currently. As we said, we have parking on the street at different times. We have children that are crossing the street, which would be completely eliminated because we now would have enough parking onsite. With the, the town code, it's actually something that I'm greatly in favor of because it allows us as a church to have a, a section of the parking lot saved for our first service and leave the other section open for the second service, so that there's no congestion coming in and out of the church. No congestion backing up on the road, if that makes sense, as our services are changing out.
How far apart are the two services?
They're really only about fifteen minutes apart.
Oh, okay.
So you could have...
So we go from, we go from nine AM.
You're going to be coming and going at the same time.
We, we start at nine AM and generally end about ten, ten-ten. And then our next service, which is already people coming in, would be leaving, starting at ten-thirty and leaving at about eleven-forty-five. So they're about an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes each service.
I did just want to clarify something the pastor said. That satellite parking area across the street would have been required in the early iterations of the plan. They had proposed a phase one and a phase two expansion. That satellite area was required if they were to build that phase two expansion. The phase two expansion has since been eliminated from the plan. So they are able to meet their required parking for the phase one expansion, which is what they're proposing, on the main parcel, which was...
With the sixty-eight spots.
Correct.
How big is the building today and how big will it be with the expansion?
The building currently is right about twenty-six hundred square feet. We're adding an additional three thousand square feet. So our, and, and for reasons, we have no office space, we have no classrooms. We have three full-time ministers on staff with another part-time minister. So there's no offices for them. That will be added in the new building. There are no classrooms, so we will have meeting spaces for classrooms for kids. Our youth space is currently offsite, it will now be onsite. So our, our, our norfex, our foyer space, which is only two hundred square feet, will now increase to about eight hundred square feet, which would allow the freedom for the space of, of the people that we're accommodating.
And more use of the building.
Oh, without, well, no, it wouldn't change the use of the building as far as...
But more, more activity at the building.
No, it wouldn't change the activity. Our services would remain the same.
It's a quality of the services.
Our ministries, our ministry programs would remain the same. There's no change of that. It's just the, the congestion of where we are right now. To get in and out of our building with how many people in the foyer alone is very difficult. So we're, that's really the, the reason for our build.
I remember you mentioned last time that you were using some, in the basement with folding chairs you were using for facilities for the children's programs and such. So that will be eliminated, so you'll have classroom space and adequate space to do your programs.
No, we will have classroom space on the first floor. The basement will still be used as was initially shown, designed, for children's space, nursery space, all of that. Because the, the first floor is classrooms, sanctuary, foyer and offices. So that, that would not change. It's right now currently the space for our children. It, it is just, again, we've outgrown it. We serve, we serve many families. So most of our, most of our congregants are, are young families with two to three, four children. So that, that is the reason of why we're, we're expanding. Thank you.
And just to clarify, any, you know, the church, the seats are one thing. They have addressed and they do meet the requirement, parking for all of the accessory space in the basement, all the rooms, any office space, that all was taken into account, so.
And as per, as per the zoning board of appeals, when we met with them, they, they voted in favor. But one of the things that they asked us to include in that was to retain the property across the street, that we would not sell it. It would be put in, that that property would be retained by the church, so that there wouldn't be further commercial development with our selling of that property. You may know, one of our, I don't know if you were able to watch or... And for those reasons, for that property. And, and our biggest opponent, opponent at that time was our nearest neighbor, who is now fighting for the direction of our project and the furthest of it.
What is that zone there in the, for the...
I believe it's RB eighty.
RB eighty. So it couldn't be, so it would have to be a home only? There's, there would be no commercial development on that lot across the street, if it's RB eighty?
Well, there, there's a small building across the street, I mean, right now it's just used as storage for the church. Potentially through a zoning board special exemption, you know, it could be one pre-existing, non-conforming used to another.
But what's on it, what's on it, what's...
But, but you're saying that you're okay with tying this piece across the street to the church?
We are, yes.
So we don't worry about that.
But I'm just saying, the, 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 the statement was that, that in doing that, you're preventing a commercial building from going there. It's not zoned for a commercial building, so you're not preventing a commercial building going there because it's not, it's only zoned for a house.
That was the concern of the neighbors.
Right, I know, but that, I'm just clarifying, I'm clarifying the statement, that's all. That's, that's all I'm, I'm doing.
So the only concern that I have, and I appreciate you reaching out to your pastors and asking them to look and see if there's any backup after the church. So if the church gets out at ten-ten, between ten-ten and ten-thirty, and you're saying most of your families are going westbound. You know, there are residential homes that will probably be going eastbound to get into town. And I'm just wondering if it's wide enough at that intersection to where you can make a right turn and then other people be waiting to make a left?
That actually, you mean coming south off of Dogwood? That was analyzed in the traffic impact statement, and they said the intersection is wide enough so you could have the people who are going to queue left and the people who are going to queue right.
And what, what grade did that intersection get?
Depending on the time of day, it was E or F, so I mean, there, there's no...
Yeah. And how, what's... And how, what's the weight?
There's no doubt, at the peak time on Saturday, it was six hundred and fifty seconds.
So how, that's ten minutes.
That's over ten, almost eleven minutes. And I mean, there's no question about it in its current state. And this was analyzed with the current state, with no build, no Venetia Square, no church expansion. This was, uh, it was done actually in twenty-sixteen. They added, uh, you know, a multiple, kind of like a build percentage to give the twenty-eighteen no-build standard. So I mean, there's no question, the intersection is a terrible intersection.
And this was, the times that this was done was not during any busy times. It was in February and March. So that was our least traffic times.
Obviously, the concern for us in that area is really July into November. I know that's impacted, I know that area is impacted by the fall harvest traffic.
I'm thinking about that too. If the majority of his people are going westbound from eight in the morning to one in the afternoon, that traffic is tied up going eastbound. So they'll be able to get out, it won't be an issue. Right. And anybody that lives east of there, or even southeast of there, is gonna go down to the, to the, to the road.
And the significant amount of traffic also is at the end of the day, when the workday is over and people trying to get back to their residences, coming off of unemployed and heading east on twenty-five A to get into the Waiting River area where they reside. So I think that's where I see most of the traffic backup year-round is.
And that was, and they did analyze the AM peak during the midweek and the PM. They were significantly better than they were on the Saturday peak time. Uh, but they were still, you know, not a desirable intersection.
And we know nothing about Sundays. So this is, this is my concern, because even if you, 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 you do have the ninety spots. If you have sixty-eight on and you have ninety, the other thirty a- across the street, and you're not, you're not, uh, you're not allowing that price of property while you're not developing and you're not closing it off to parking, is, am I correct?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay, is there an intention to close it off to parking, to stay with the sixty-eight spots so we don't, you know, have this capacity to have ninety spots there? If, say, in two years from now, you know, you, your, your church, you know, has more congregants come to it and then you end up with ninety there on Sunday for one mass and ninety for the next mass? Or even seventy-five and seventy-five? I, I know that it's.
From your mouth to God's ears.
Yeah, exactly. But, but this is, but this is my concern. Because it's not my concern for right now, it's really my concern for five years from now. You know, that, that, that really is what the, what the issue is here. It's, it's not how many people, and you've grown pretty substantially within the, what, three years that you've, that you've been there?
Uh, we've been there for six years now.
Six years, so, so you, how much, have you doubled in six years?
Uh, yes, we have.
So it is a concern.
A- a- and I, I do understand that.
Which is why you took the phase-two development off the project.
Cor- it, it is part of it, yes, correct. Um, and, and really, this project, and, and this is the, this is my hope, is that, that we can move forward with this project because it's hindering our ability to do what we're doing now.
No, we understand.
I, I, I know. And I, I'm just, I'm just sharing that. You know, the impact that the church has had in this town and in this community, I feel, has been huge. Uh, with Riverhead School District, Shoreham Waiting River School District, Little Flower, um, and, and all that is happening there. Uh, so many community business owners, uh, that would share the impact that this church specifically has had in our town. And that's what we hope to continue to be able to do. Uh, but it, where we are currently as a church.
Does it fit, meet your needs?
It, it, it's, it's not.
We understand, we understand, we understand, we completely understand that. But we also have to look at the needs of the community. So, so in working together, and that's where we, if we have a traffic study that, that is basically showing it's, it's not working as it is. So incre- to increase that, I think what the, what was asked was, was for you to study it on a Sunday to see what we're looking at for us to be able to make a decision. Uh, I don't doubt that, that what you're saying is correct. Um, but, but we need a little bit more to rely on than, than, that everybody's gonna be turning, you know, left coming out at a particular time. That's, that's really my, that's really what I'm looking at.
I, I, I respect that and I understand that. My question is, if it is a failed intersection, we have the Venetia project across the street. We have currently, uh, commercial buildings that are sitting on twenty-five A that are creating between the funeral home, the dentist office, the bank. Why would that then fall on the church's responsibility to take care of?
It's not, it's not the church's responsibility to take care of. But it's the town, that this town board's responsibility to not exasperate a situation that we know is a challenging situation to begin with. So we know that this situation exists. So it is our job to not exasperate a situation that we know is probably not the best situation to begin with. And that, that's, that's, that's really part of our charge here.
I hear what you're saying. I'm not sure I agree where you're going with it. I, I think what I see is a church that's growing and, and has grown, no matter what. It, the people that are parking on the street on Dogwood Drive, parking in the overflow lot, walking across the street, going into a building that's undersized for the work that it's doing there. This is correcting that problem now. I don't think, so I think by them doing their expansion of the church, putting additional parking there where they can pretty much continue what they got now, preserving across the street for future growth, if there is a future growth, and coveting that you're not gonna sell it for commercial use or whatever, that may be something that our board has to deal with five years from now.
But it would not come back to the board. It would not, it would, uh, that, that growth would not come back to the board. If we approve this the way it is, it will not come back to the board because they can park on both sides.
Well, we don't have an issue with that. I, I tell you why I don't have an issue with it.
May I ask this question?
Yeah.
Or, or may I make this statement? Um, if this project is halted, it does not stop us, as situated now, from continuing to grow. And it might mean that we add a third service instead of being able to build and have two services that accommodate.
But then it does reduce the congestion coming in and out. Because you're not, if you have, if you're having smaller services to accommodate everybody, you're not having the, it, it's the impact of the amount of cars at one particular time. So if you had to accommodate it where you had an additional service, then, then you're meeting the requirements of where you are now. Basically, you're not having any greater impact than you're having now, right? Because you're just, you're taking that and spreading it out over time. That's the point, that's the point that I'm trying to make.
I'm reading this a little bit differently because I think when you took over there, it was a very limited-use facility. Um, the congregation was very small.
Correct.
You've been there six years. You, your name is out there. Your congregation, congregation has grown. And I think over the six years, you're probably close to being peaked out. You may get some new parishioners, without a doubt. But I think the big ground swell has already happened. And allowing this project to go forward is gonna allow you to accommodate what you have now and a little bit of future growth. I'm not as concerned five years down the road that you're gonna double or triple again in size because I think the nature of what you're doing, you've seen that ground swell already in the six years that you've been there. And I'm not as concerned that it's gonna, again, that it's gonna double or triple down the road. So I'm not as concerned about that.
Do you feel the same way with that? Do you feel that you've sort of peaked out your congregation and you're not going to expand?
I think there's going to be more growth. I wouldn't say we've peaked out. I, I don't think it's going to be the exponential growth at the rate of speed at which, uh, you're, you're assuming or maybe thinking and trying to prepare for, and I respect that one hundred percent. Um, I, I guess my question in it all is, if we recognize it's already a failed intersection, that something has to be done. Um, that our project with Venetia project going in and still moving forward on that project, that our project isn't gonna change what is already going to be done, regardless if our project moves forward, moves forward or not. Does that make sense? Because it, it's failed, it's been easier?
Wait a second. Yeah, I, I don't think the board's looking to halt the project. I think the board, I think what we're looking at here is to possibly do a study on Sunday. My, my, my concern, and first of all, let me say, it's really admirable how the church has grown in this many years. I'm absolutely thrilled, especially someone who worked with children for all those years. And it's, it's fantastic for our community. They gotta check out one of your services. But that being said, um, I, I think that there's too many variables here. You know, like, when are people, you don't know. You're saying people are leaving at all different times. But that's, that's kind of a variable. Um, how many people, where people are coming from, you know, maybe you might suddenly pick up. A neighborhood might come to your, someone from your neighborhood east of you might come and then all of a sudden you get a big crew from there. I, I think it's, we shouldn't be making predictions. I think we have to look at things in a systematic way. And it is a bad intersection and I think we're really simply asking for a study to be done during the times when you are in church, right?
Yep.
I think that's, that's, that is it.
Well, I mean, the question is if we have, if we direct the applicant to go ahead and prepare this study, it may teach, you know, we may learn something, but the question would then fall is how do we mitigate that? You know, I, I don't think it's reasonable to have the church signalize the intersection. The right-out-only is sort of undesired, it's gonna direct them all into the neighborhood, you know, the residential neighborhood.
You could do right-out-only at the end of Dogwood though.
Then that with the neighbors that are in Dogwood.
Then you're getting, then you're getting steam involved.
But you could, but, but you could also do it a- at certain times. You know, as they do on many, many roads where they have only, you know, to alleviate just this kind of thing when there is congestion, uh, at a particular time, that there are limited times that you can't make a right or a left. You know, you certainly could do on Sundays from nine to, to one. There'll be no left-hand turn, um, off of Dogwood onto, onto twenty-five, and then they would go around the other way.
I don't agree with that.
But the greater problem is not, it, it, it's, it's peak hours, and Sunday morning is not peak hours.
Well, this is what we're saying. We, we don't, we, that's what we're asking to find out, really. That's, that's really what we're asking to find out. You know, if, if, if your services, you know, like you said, you have services nine to ten and ten, ten-thirty to eleven-forty-five. Let's say you did grow and you added another service and now you're coming out there at one-thirty. You know, that's a different, a different amount of traffic though.
I, I don't see it. I tell you, because I, I go to church every week and, and I go to a congregational church. It's not quite as big as yours, but we have the same thing at the church where we have a little coffee hour, a little social, and we trickle out. And, you know, and we're right on Main Street, East Avenue, it's a, it's a commercial road, but it, it, it's, it's drips. I, I mean, it's not like a Catholic church where you get two hundred people, walk out and get in their car and leave. It, it's just not like that.
Well, but we're allowed, what we are allowing.
You can't wait to get out and leave.
What, what we're allowing is, but what we're allowing. Ninety, ninety spots, ninety spot, you know, sixty-eight spots on a property is, is different than, than the ability to park in ninety spots.
Well, I just, when a, when a traffic engineer is gonna analyze a project, I mean, you could have a ninety spaces for a hundred-square-foot building. They're gonna look at the build, you know, the building, the use, the trip generation that's resulted from that. So I, I don't want the fact that there are ninety combined spaces to sort of be like, pump the brakes.
Yeah, no, no.
That's something, that, that, there are, there are ninety spaces, but they would analyze the build-out and the use, which the engineer, kind of in his opinion, you know, he's a professional engineer licensed. He said you're not gonna be generating many trips compared to what's already at the intersection.
Correct.
So that's, I, I just kinda, you know, I wanted.
That's why I, I can't see asking them to put extra money out for another study for a Sunday. I really can't. I, I don't think it's gonna be adversely affected. I, I really don't.
And if I was heading eastbound and there was a problem, I would go the other way.
Go north and then go out there.
And I know we're talking in hypotheticals, but in six years, we're looking on average at twenty-five cars. To have, to jump to ninety cars in one service and ninety cars in another service would be an astronomical build.
Because how many do you have coming to each service?
That wouldn't even fit our, our building as it is proposed.
Then you're gonna have to go on television.
Uh, we already do Facebook Live.
So phase two, phase two is off, off the table.
Correct, correct.
I'm more concerned about the two services. Do you do the same sermon for each service?
I do.
Is it better the second time?
You'll have to come to find out.
Yeah, there you go.
The whole board can come, and I would, uh, welcome every one of you.
All right. So what, what's the consensus of the board? What is the board, what, what they like the applicant to do?
I, I don't want them to do a further study. I don't think it's necessary. I don't want them to go through the expense for it. I'm comfortable that the people he has there now, he has, it's operating the way it's operating. It's not gonna change with the addition of the church. It's gonna make his services better and, and his congregation easier to deal with inside the building, but I don't see any further impact, uh, that we need a further traffic study.
I, I think so.
I, I sort of agree. I think actually it's, it's correcting a problem now with parking and parking across the street. It's actually cleaning up, uh, the services, so it's, it's more organized. I, I'm in favor of that. And I will have to check out those sermons. I'll let you know when you do.
Anytime.
He'll climb them from the audience.
I, I would be okay moving forward, but I would like to work on getting a right-only out of Dogwood during the times of the, during the times of the service releases on Sundays.
May I question that?
Because, because I do think that, that over time, it's gonna increase more traffic. So I think if you're coming out of Dogwood to go left and cut across the two lanes of traffic, which we already know is, is a failed intersection there. So that if you made the right there, as you say, most of your parishioners are coming from the west, that allows them to go out and, and make the turn there with no issue. But those that are not going that way will then go around and use the traffic light on the other side so as to not impede traffic.
I would, I would only prefer not to move in that direction because it would put more traffic through the residential neighborhood. But I also ask why only Sundays when we consider that traffic is much higher during the week and at peak hours, where that would be more understanding to have that right turn only?
Because I still think you're expanding your services. I think you're expanding your space to have, and you're a growing church. So it, it is increasing traffic.
Would that no right turn include peak hours during the week?
No.
I, I don't, I don't agree with that.
I don't favor that.
I mean, that's, if, if the board wished to address that, that's something we'd have to go to the state.
Yes, great, yes, great, yes.
I don't know if it's necessarily a condition of approval.
No, no, not a condition of approval, but, no, not a condition of approval, but.
Independent of the church, if the board wanted to do that, we can.
Something maybe could be looked at down the road if it becomes an issue, but I don't see it. I just don't see it.
Well, anything you do with the state takes about a year and a half. So I think if we do it now, that's what I'm saying. If we start it now and, and, right, in six years, we'd have something in there that would be.
I think the people that live on Dogwood would be aggravated if they could only make a right going out of there just when the people are in, in service. And there aren't any cars coming to the church.
And you've helped something with the community, you've invited the community in for this?
We, we've not invited the community. We invited those members that have, that were in opposition to our project to sit and talk. I did, I've spent at length, uh, two specific neighbors, uh, specifically the Acevedos, um, who I've gotten to know very well over the past two and a half, three months.
Acevedo, it's Ace, Acevito?
Acevito. Uh, Marty and, Artie and March. Um, and they are.
They're in favor of the project, just so you know.
Now they are. They came out originally.
Well, they were. Originally, they, they were opposed to the project, and now they are tremendously in favor of it. And we have a great relationship that's built, uh, through this time. And so I'm thankful for, uh, what created that relationship and, um.
I, I can tell you from working almost eight years exclusively in Waiting River as a patrolman, anybody that lives on Dogwood or Ravine or Overlook know when they can go down that street and make a left and when they shouldn't go down that street and make a left. And I think the parishioners are the same way.
All right. So it seems like the board, it seems like we've kind of reached a decision on that. Now, the next question is, uh, we still have not held a public hearing for the Church of Special Park. Uh, if the board desires, I can check with Diane, get the next available dates to see when it could work out. And I could have a resolution at the next town board meeting to authorize scheduling a public hearing.
Yes.
Fine with me.
That could be a night meeting, that would be great. Um, I also just had, there was some comments in here about lead agency.
Um, yeah, so that's, when we, when we schedule the public hearing, I mean, I can include language for the town board to assume lead agency. Because we've sent out the secret coordination letter. We have not, you know, we have not received any feedback or any desires.
So no one from the New York State DOT has responded?
No, no one from DOT. Suffolk County Planning Commission got it. It was a local determination, you know, went out to all.
And that was sent more than forty-five days ago?
Yeah, well, it was a thirty-day coordination, but yeah, that was sent out probably about two months ago.
Yeah, when we first started, when we first started, that can be sent out, yeah.
Yes. Uh, so I will make sure the public hearing is scheduled on a night town board session. Uh, and I'll get those dates and I will have a resolution on the next meeting. All right?
Okay.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And next we are up for the amended chapter two fifty-five changes.
I stand anyway. I have to do that. I'm too sedentary.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Good morning.
Let's see, you have a stack there.
Board and the big guns for this, huh, with Greg? Yes, I think we are too. Seems to put a lot of work into it and something that's kind of. That's what I was gonna say, it hasn't been done in such a way.
There you go.
And it has changed.
I think I need one more.
Do you want more coffee?
Can you give it to Jim and if you want to sit next to me, we'll share?
Yeah, also next to Ted, cause his is like. He shares all the time.
I do. I'm not like me. It's all about me.
I just have the Red Frog application. They chose not to come in today to address us or?
Well, she said she was gonna be in California, so it's not that she chose not to come, but she was unavailable.
Are we out of the forty-day? She couldn't fly back here and fly out.
Forty days, so she's waiting for a response from us. We need to talk about that.
Okay.
Okay, so, I think, I have one for the fees, but I think that might take a little longer to talk about, so I, I thought we might go through the actuals.
Yep, mhm.
Um, we did go over this at our last meeting, I think September fourth or something like that, but, um, I kinda cleaned it up, and there are, as you see, the underlined, um, uh, text is what I, I've added, so I don't know if you wanna go through page by page, it's not that long.
I'm on one and two, I'm on three.
Yeah, three is here, all I did was cleaned up the definition of charitable organizations. So that's, you know, the thing, yeah.
Right, but it, but the last sentence reads, and shall provide services or funds that benefit residents of the town of Riverhead. So what does that mean, does that mean that a donation would have to be made to the town of Riverhead from?
Where are you?
On page three.
On the first page?
No, page three.
Well, what I think it means is that, what we had discussed before, that you want like, it's an oval charity.
It's a local, a lo, a local charity where, where they have an office, an office or some sort of presence in the town of Riverhead.
So when they do the Alzheimer's Walk at Grand Bell Park, that wouldn't be considered, uh, chapter two fifty-five, or the ALS, or the?
They would all be, they would all be considered, but they wouldn't be considered a not-for-profit, they pay, pay regular fee. Because we were going back to the seven, oh, we also had the seven-year, um, was it, what did we decide on, seven years?
Was it seven, I can't remember.
I can't remember. Five, ten, and then we came.
I thought we were gonna do a chart as to who have five and who had seven.
We did, everybody got that.
I had said.
We did, that was sent out, that was you.
Okay, if I can just see that.
Jody wanted that chart.
I, did you give me a copy of the chart?
I sent, I did, I think I sent you, do you have it, if not, I can see.
I don't think I had that Diane.
Mine is like a real one.
I remember seeing it, but it didn't have all the information that I was asking for.
I have.
I had put some, um.
Don, do you, do you get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Let me, um, oh, I gave it wrong, okay, true, not for profit. Don't have that in here, but let me check. Yeah, we have meeting notes, so that we spoke about it. This is what you're looking for, right, Jody?
Yeah, there was something that was emailed to us, but it didn't have all the information, it's, it didn't have five, seven, and ten years, it had.
I think you did email it to me, but I don't, I don't have it in my folder.
I can see if I have.
Get that, okay.
I don't think I put five, seven, and ten, I think I just.
In question to what you said, Jody, like with the, uh, Alzheimer's Walk.
Mhm.
Shall provide services or funds that benefit residents of the town of Riverhead. Would the walk itself be considered providing a service?
I don't know, well, that's why I just want clarity, because I don't want to take national not-for-profits that don't have an office in Riverhead and make them pay to have a walk at Grand Bell Park, or?
Well, I think it's only, it's only a hundred, it's only a hundred and fifty dollars for the not, for the not-for-profit.
But if they don't require, you know, any town services as far as.
There's, any, any chapter two fifty-five requires town services, just the application of a chapter two fifty-five requires town services.
Right, requires the work.
It's the town clerk's services, it's, it's, it's Laura's services, it's fire marshal's services, it's police services. Every application gets reviewed and looked at and sent to the different departments for input. So no matter what, no matter who you are, no matter what you're doing, it requires a, 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 quite a lot of services, and especially when you go up in the numbers. So if you're, if you're, you know, at that hundred mark to whatever we said, the five hundred mark, that five to seven fifty, that, then the seven fifty, a thousand and above, all that, every single time you add more people to it, there's more, there's more, uh, screening, I mean, you have, you have, you know, not-for-profits that are having, you know, they can have, uh, sometimes have alcohol at the thing, they could be running this, that, and the other thing. So it requires a lot of town time to be able to, uh, approve or, or get the information for the event.
I, I understand that if they're serving alcohol, then they should automatically be charged a fee, because that does require a review of the police department and of the fire marshal and everybody else, but, I mean, we've had the Alzheimer's Walk at Grand Bell Park, and I don't remember ever seeing a police officer there or fire marshal there, I mean, I just.
But they don't get charged for that then, that's a separate charge, so that, that, that's when they fill out the form, and it gets evaluated, what it is, the services, but it still gets sent to all of the departments to say, I need to have.
They have to get their blessings, too, right.
Right, and they still have to review everything to decide whether they're, they're, they're part of that event or not. It's not, it, you know, even not having somebody there is still a coordinated review of all of this.
You're saying it's a hundred and fifty, doesn't seem like.
We didn't go over that yet.
Yeah, we don't, we, okay, so let's, 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 let's just. Alright, so for charitable organizations, and you look at other towns, do they, do they exempt not-for-profits?
No.
No other town exempts not-for-profits, correct?
They all charge.
They all charge for not-for-profits, we're the only town that doesn't charge for a not-for-profit. So one of the things that we had said was, was that, I know, one of the things I had said that is that if we wanna continue a tradition that has gone here, so if somebody was a not-for-profit and had been running something here originally, we had said five years, um, and then the board was back and forth between seven and ten years, there are several ones we could grandfather in and exempt uh, as, as a, as a not-for-profit in our town that would not fall under this new requirement, but I, I mean, personally, I am okay charging not-for-profits because I think there's a lot of, a lot, or a reduced fee, you know, but when you have, have some of these not-for-profits coming in, they're, they're running huge events.
No, it's okay, if other towns, and they've done the comparison, and other towns are all charging, and we're the only towns that aren't charging, then we should definitely be charging.
Okay, so for this charitable.
A reduced fee, but yes, I agree.
So, so, but then when we say reduced fee, who are we charging a reduced, what is the qualifications for a reduced fee, the, the ones that we currently have?
That, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Okay, so the ones that are between seven and ten years will just do that small, the small fee schedule, anything else?
Oh, you have to look at the.
There will be no more acceptance of not-for-profit exemptions, except for people that have been, been, uh, running events here, and then they will get charged the not-for-profit fee, which I think is a hundred and fifty dollars or something like that.
I had my notes here, I did the research, if, if I look back twenty years, we had the Country Fair, the Polish, um, Fair, the Mosaic Festival, the Jamesport Carnival, and Dark Side Wanted House Walkroom. Those are the ones that like, have been, we've been doing for a very long time, so those, if you say.
Well, Dark Side's, Dark Side's not, not-for-profit.
No, no, I'm just saying events, special events.
Right, standalone events.
Reoccurring events over those number of years.
Reoccurring, those are the ones that have been doing it for a long time.
So those don't count as like.
Well, Country Fair.
Assemblies, like when we have the, um, things, the events at Grand Bell Park where there's a vigil, or where there's a.
No, that's an assembly permit, assembly permit with, um, Chief Pegimella, with the police department.
Okay, are we charging for those?
No.
No, they don't get charged for them.
Okay, so parades either?
Yeah, and, and the other town, Southampton doesn't charge for assemblies either.
Okay.
They just want like forty-eight hour notice, they want it written.
A des- description of the event and who will be there, and so, but you're allowed free assembly, so you just have to notify over a certain amount to the, to the authority.
Okay, um, let's see, and you also said that, going back to not-for-profits, that you wanted a letter to go out to all, everybody that's not-for-profit that's been recurring, that now.
Once we just.
To notify them.
I have not prepared that yet, but I'm waiting for the outcome of when we're all done, you know, so I, I have that on my list to do.
Correct.
Good, absolutely.
Okay, so then if we go to the next page, I just added a special event permit.
Can we just go back, did we, are we in agreement for the charitable organizations, because what we have here is not what we just said?
Of course.
So.
Let me go back, I'm on page twelve.
Okay, on page three, charitable organizations, we are crossing this out, correct? And we will just put, on here, we will put, um, the fol, either the following have been grandfathered in, or unless you've been consistent for the past ten years. I mean, how do we wanna, how do we want?
I don't think we should name in the code, the code is pretty narrow.
Okay. Right.
You'd have to remove charitable organizations, I mean.
We just said we were.
It's just a definition.
It's only a definition.
It's only a definition.
But, but why do we need to define it if we're not using it?
Because it might refer in the fee schedule to a charitable organization at the reduced fee.
Right, well, there are charitable.
Well, we are using it, cause we still have to charge them.
There are other areas in the code that refer to charitable, like profit and loss.
Okay, so then, so then when we do charitable organizations, what does it mean to say, and shall provide services or funds that benefit the residents of the town of Riverhead?
You need to take that out.
That, that might have to come out.
I would just put a period after New York, and take that out.
Yep. Yep.
That was, I put in there because we had the last discussion of local.
Was, well, the last discussion was, we wanted to go into their books and see how much money they were making, what they were.
Right.
Right, and, yeah.
No, it's just that there was a donation locally, that was what the whole thing was, I know it got screwed somewhere else, but.
Right, okay, so I'm gonna take that, take the end of it out, and all, all of this again is just, of course, suggestions, so, you know, food for thought.
Work in progress, right.
I know you, I know you increased the timelines, which you did.
Okay.
Before you move on?
Yes, sure.
We just spoke a few minutes ago about who are special events, instead of spectators.
Oh, that's on this page?
That's on page four.
Okay, if you look, well, if you look under the.
Your glaze is down on your nose, yeah.
The definition of special event, you're saying it's on page four.
On page three, under a special event.
On the special event.
Okay.
It says one hundred spectators.
If you go down where a hundred spectators, it should be, um, spe, it should be attendees, spectators, both, not, it's not, what if they're.
Participants.
Yeah, attendees, participants, not spectators.
Some of these events don't really have spectators, you have a carnival, they're attendees.
They're not just watching, you know what I mean?
So you don't want, so you just want to.
Not the ones that are actually in.
I think so, yeah.
I'm just gonna put, you know.
Attendees slash spectators?
Yeah, no.
Let, let's, let's just talk to Bob, we'll get Bob Kozakovich's.
Cause then it's combined, attendees and spectators.
Okay.
Just some of them don't really have spectators, they're, they're participants or attendees.
It's true.
You know, you have a carnival, you don't have people that are going there to watch the rides go around, but they go there to ride the rides.
Right.
No, I watch them, I don't give a. Those damn things. I wanna get on those things and get paid. Watching the discipline, my life is rusted, you know, or the road races, you know.
Did you watch them extricate those people at the top of the roller coaster at, uh, fifty feet up?
Fresh coat of paint over the rusty, I'll get that.
Okay, should we go to page four?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I added special event permit, cause it's really not anywhere in here, and it's just a permit for a special event issued under this chapter. I just kinda cleaned it up.
Okay.
And really, for, for us, the special permit is the town board resolution.
Okay.
Okay, and then if we go down under two fifty-five nine, uh, I just cleaned it up, application for such permit shall be on the form provided by the town clerk, and shall contain all the required information and material, we do have that in other sections of the code. So we wanna make sure that it's, everything that we're looking for is, is included.
But I, I thought that we were going to put on here, late applications will not be accepted.
We're, we didn't get there yet.
It, it should be in here also.
It's coming up, it's coming up.
I, I honestly think if you have a thousand people coming to an event, I think that the long form, should, I, I, I think, I think anything over either, and, and this is, you know, over, what do you think, seven fifty, but I think when you get to that thousand, I think that, that short form doesn't cover everything, because you're always going back, are you gonna do this, are you gonna do this, are you gonna do that?
Can I have a special second fee schedule that you might like better than what we have, we haven't seen it yet.
And it says, for an event where more than a thousand spectators, but fewer than five thousand, are expected at any one time during the duration of the event, a special event long form.
So, and it should be a thousand, so it should, but what I'm saying is, see, when you see written permission, note, one, right? A sh, a special event, short form application, small, small gathering, where a, one, a hundred to a thousand attendees, right?
Nine ninety-nine.
I think a thousand is too high a number for a short form.
It's not a small gathering.
They get nine ninety-nine?
Okay, wait, let's, let's look at this, cause you may wanna incorporate both.
Over a thousand. They're just changing, you know.
Seven fifty.
Yeah.
That's what you're doing. You're having a block party, yeah.
I'm gonna have to run this off of them, cause I, Craig, could you give them yours and I'll do it again, I had eight copies, I don't, I do some out, I guess. Um, I think we're, right now, if everybody, this one here, if you look, the, the, the top is just a regular resolution.
Right.
Of putting it, the second one, if you see the very top, short form, long form, long form, that's what we had before that you saw last week. From two hundred to three fifty, I added the not-for-profits, the late application fee, the fee for an amendment and liability insurance, and also, um, on the second page, cost reimbursement, for person, for, you know, employees to get reimbursed. Now, if you look at the, the, the last two pages, this is actually what Southampton Town has. For one-day event, less than two hundred and fifty people, which we don't even, well, we have it to a hundred, it's fifty dollars per day, and twenty-five dollars per setup day. Okay, so, right now, we get two hundred for, you know, one, up to, for one hundred or higher. So we would maybe lose a little money there, but if you go to the second scenario, for events occurring over more than one day, or events with between two fifty and five hundred people, is one fifty per event, per day, we get a flat two hundred right now. And then seventy-five per day, per setup day.
Right, but we could, but, the only, that's kind of not what I'm asking though.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, the information for an event that's going to have a thousand people.
Okay.
The information that you receive on the short form application.
Right.
I think that they should fill out the long form application because there, there are, because there's so many people coming. I think the information gathered in the long form is more comprehensive for an event with a thousand people, because it's like, I'll, I'll just say the, the, I'll, I'll say Red Tree Fire, or, no, any event.
Right.
Okay, we're having nine hundred and ninety people, and they fill out the short form, so, but they didn't say whether they had fire, whether they have alcohol, whether they have this, because it's not captured in.
Right. Right, in the, oh, thank you.
In the long, in the long form, in the short form.
The short form, mhm.
So I think when you're having, I honestly think when you're having over five hundred people at an event, that you should be required to fill out the, the long, the long form. You could, you know, you could still, your fee schedule with short form, long form.
Right.
Can still just be based on people, like I think, this is kind of what I was saying last time, I think there's this gap between five hundred and a thousand people, or seven fifty and a thousand people, um, that we're missing, because we have, we have a lot of events in those categories that, that.
They're too broad.
Right, it's too, exactly, it's too broad, I think we need to narrow down our requirements, I mean, you see the forms, right?
Right.
The, the short form doesn't have a lot of comprehensive information when you're gonna have a thousand people at an event.
I agree with you, so what if we put between three fifty and six fifty, uh, five hundred dollar cost for events between seven hundred and fifty and a thousand people?
It's not so much the cost she's talking about, as it is the form, the, the information receiving.
Not the cost, it's the form, the form, right. No, no, but also, there's a lot more review, is what she's saying, when it becomes to seven hundred and fifty and a thousand, and she wants to be compensated for that, so that's why.
Just change it thousand to seven fifty, go to the day.
Yeah, I think that that would be.
Seven fifty to a thousand and five hundred dollars, and then do the, um, cause it's between the three fifty and the six fifty. And then the, the long form for seven fifty.
Right, if you just change that number to seven fifty, then it captures everything.
Yeah. Okay.
So on the special event short form application, it goes up to seven fifty, and then the long form starts at seven fifty one, yeah.
It's seven fifty-one.
Sure.
And then I also think that, that when you, I, I think five thousand, for, if you're gonna have five thousand people for, for, for six, I, I think, I mean, five thousand people at an event is a huge event, you know, and, and we're talking that, that's a lot of coordination. So are we really still gonna leave it as if we were doing seven hundred, you know, I think that that should be lower also, I think that should be maybe twenty-five hundred. And then after that, it goes to this, to the bigger application. Because once you end up over, over, you know.
So what did you want for the long form, the seven fifty-one to the five thousand?
Uh, instead of to five thousand, to twenty-five hundred.
Okay, and then on the next one, twenty-five, over one.
And then the next one, twenty-five oh one and up.
Well, they're both special event long form applications.
Yeah, but the fee is different.
The fee is different.
Because when you end up over twenty-five hundred people, you're paying twenty-seven fifty, because there's a lot more coordination that happens there.
Twenty-five hundred to.
So I'm looking at, I'm looking at the law, now you're looking at the reso, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, we are, we're on the reso.
Yeah, we're looking at the resolution. It's the second page.
Well.
We were on this.
No, we were on this, I mean, what?
But, 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 you know what it is, is, is the amount, the amount of, of, of coordination for these large events. I'm just gonna say there's one event that's, has an application in now, they put in an application, because they're, and why this is getting changed? Because they put in an application, they're going to have, potentially have, you know, a couple thousand people there, but never at one time. They're gonna have fire events there, they're gonna have alcohol events there, they're going to have electricity, uh, there, they're having all of these things. And the way it's set up now, they're paying what, a three hundred and fifty dollar fee for, for coordination and handing it in within forty days. It's, it's insane.
It is.
For, for everyone to try and jump through hoops to be able to, to even figure out how everything works, and, and this is what I go back to in the, you know, these people need much more time to advertise their events, and so they need to know whether they can have the events or not, so whether they can advertise, because they're selling tickets, whether with, with or without our approval at this point, and we've seen that how many times? I'm gonna say almost every, every event that sells tickets has sold tickets before they put applications in.
Absolutely, we have the one that we just did, that she was like, I'm not sending out invites until you guys tell me what you're gonna charge me.
Right, yeah.
Which was the property.
But that was on town property, so that was, that was a little, that was a little different, but we, you know, there's, there's, I mean, how many events did, have we had that have had pre, pre-sold over a thousand tickets?
Well, usually the, the five K runs.
Yep, application fees.
And we had the bounce house. You know, we have a lot of applica- so it's, anyhow, so just, that, that's my, that, that's.
So, let me just go back then, the special then short form, on the very, the very first one, for an event where one hundred to seven fifty.
Yes, yep.
The fee is going to be.
Three hundred and fifty.
Three fifty, okay. Then, on the second one, for an event more than seven fifty one to five thousand.
No, it's twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
There you go, that's what I had wrong, okay. And that fee is going to be.
Six hundred and fifty smackers.
Six fifty, yep. Okay, and then the last one, for an event more than five thousand spectators expected.
Twenty-five oh one.
Okay, twenty, twenty-five oh one?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, okay.
Five thousand.
All right.
To, to, to whatever, cause we don't, we don't lim- do we limit our events to five thousand?
Once it gets above five thousand, I think it's like the county has to get involved.
Is that how it works?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
County, yeah, gathering permit, county gets involved as well as, you know.
Okay.
Looking at this, I think I need a special long form application just to have my whole family over for dinner.
Especially when you have a street named after you.
I can fully understand application fees, and you wanna, you wanna put the application fees in there, because you want to encourage people to fill out, people to get in in time and manner, and the work that has to go through, I just always have a hard time with setting fees for the sake of setting fees.
Well.
So they have to be somewhat justified, somewhere.
Laura, how much of your time is spent on chapter two fifty?
Whether it's police, something, so if I'm paying you twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars to have twenty-five, two thousand five hundred and one people come to a lavender fest, um, how, what, what am I getting for that twenty-seven fifty, the size of review?
All right, but let's just talk about, Laura, how much of your time is spent on two, two fifty fives a week?
I'm guessing forty percent at this point.
So forty percent of her salary is spent on chapter two fifty?
Forty percent of her.
Forty percent.
But then with an event that big, they're gonna have tents, they're gonna have.
Just tell me what I'm getting, twenty-eight hundred.
No, but, oh, Jim, what we've done in the past, and I agree with you, what we've done in the past, when, because it's against the law to just charge impact fees, so what you have to do is you have to, and analyze how much time each application, whether it's from twenty-five hundred and one to five thousand, how much time it takes for you, how much time it takes for you, how much time it takes for cheap, and then you take all those salaries and you put it into a report, and that's the number that you come up with, that's what we've done as far as, you know, other fees, that we've changed.
And this is like.
This, this, no, these numbers will be much higher.
Yeah, the numbers will be high.
These numbers will be, will be much higher.
Cause I spend a lot of time.
We should be charging what it costs, so then we should raise the numbers, we should be charging what it costs. The residents of the town should not be paying to subsidize their salaries for their events, we should be paying what it actually costs, they should be paying.
To give you an idea, uh, I review chapter two fifty fives that Laura sent me.
I just wanna know, that's all.
But, I'm sorry, say that again.
Said I reviewed the, the, the two fifty fives that Laura sent me, and I make comments on her resolutions, that I'm usually contacting the people, because they have to produce an outdoor public safety plan, which, a lot of the organizations that have been through this before, know what I'm looking for, they usually have a fairly good plan, we just need to tweak it a lot of times, but there's many other ones that, uh, their plans are woefully inadequate. The idea is basically to think about the emergencies before they happen, how we're gonna handle it, uh, you know, parking is usually an issue, uh, you know. So we're working through that, now with the code, also, if they have over a thousand attendees, they need to have a crowd manager, certified crowd manager for every two hundred and fifty people, so, so when you get to a thousand people, that's four crowd managers, and now I have to see that they've got people trained, that's gotta be part of their, uh, part of their, uh, emergency plan.
Craig, could a, a crowd pro- um.
It's training that's done online.
Could it be a security?
It can, very often, if they're having security.
It could fall under security guards?
Security guards, a lot of the security guards will qualify for that, or they're training, police officers, you know, retired police officers and so forth, but most people don't know how to manage a crowd, and, and they don't think about something like this until something happens, so. I'm reviewing their plans, making comments, telling them, look, this isn't enough, you need to consider this, it's back and forth quite a bit. You know, when these things come in late, now, I'm, I'm devoting a lot of time just to try and get them straightened out before their event comes along. And then, of course, there's, there's also, depending on the event, a lot of times, uh, I will require that they have EMS on site. So now, I've either gotta co- we've gotta coordinate with either Riverhead Ambulance, if they are available to do it, or have paid EMS on scene, because some of these things, like the, uh, survival races and so forth, end up with a lot of injuries. We don't, Riverhead Ambulance is busy enough that, excuse me, you know, we don't wanna make, give them, put even more pressure on them, because now they've got this weekend event, and they've got another twenty or thirty transports out of this event to the hospital on top of the, you know, all the ones that they're doing, the regular ones that they're doing, so, so that needs to be reviewed. And then, of course, fire marshal who goes out on the weekend on overtime to do the inspections, if there's tents, of course, you know, we try and get those taken care of ahead of time, if it's something.
But that's a separate fee, for the tents.
That's a separate fee, which is covered for the tents, correct. Sometimes I need to get, reach out to Suffolk County EMS for questions on things, sometimes the Department of Labor, depending on, again, what is going on, so.
Certainly.
There's a lot of review that goes into this, and.
And I think that when you get an application where, you know, and I agree with supervisor, that, you know, when you get up to above the hundred people, or the five hundred people, or the seven hundred and fifty people, you pretty much know, or, I think it's time.
More, more involved, yeah.
I think you should start tracking now, like, how long these events take you to review, and Laura, you do the same, and Diane, your staff. And then we can come up with an actual number as to what it's costing to, to.
We also have the police.
In the police, right.
Well, I was gonna say, cause, and, and, I, I, I'm glad that I spurned this conversation, I'm glad I spurned this. Yeah, thanks, Jim. But, my, my only, and tha- that's really my only concern is that, because as a taxpayer, I certainly don't wanna pay for subsidizing any of these nonprofits, whatever, but if that's the case, then my taxes don't need to be used for salaries anymore, so maybe my taxes will go down, so, um.
Wow.
You look at, well, you never know, if you get these proper fees, then maybe we don't have to pay salaries, we can let the people pay it. Or at least forty percent of it, as you say, but now, as you go through this, there's also, um, additional fees for late fees, there's additional, now.
Yeah, we.
Now, if you're at an event where you need police officers, now there's a chargeback for police officers as well, there's a chargeback for TCOs as well, there's a chargeback for fire marshals that go out in overtime, on top of this application fee, right?
Correct, because the, the fee, the fee is, are not covering those add-ons, so it's, you know.
So that twenty-eight hundred dollars is paying forty percent of Laura's salary, and you for coordinating with EMS.
And then also police, you have police, we have Diane's, we have Diane's offi- no, police, police reviews no matter what.
But that's a chargeback.
Right.
So police has to take every application, go through the application, ask all the questions, coordinate with Laura, coordinate with everybody else, even if there's no.
And that's the chief?
Even if there's.
Well, he assigns it to.
Even if there's no fee involved.
One of the lieutenants, or the captains, not the captain, but probably one of the lieutenants, they get the, the event, and they're in charge of it, and they have to work up the numbers and get them to Mary, who gets them to me, if there's gonna be a police assistance agreement, I need those numbers, based on TCOs, or, or police officers, or whatever.
But they review every application to say, police are needed, or police are not needed, so there's still time involved in, in that, whether they use police or not.
Like the garlic festival and all that stuff, that type of thing.
Yeah, and just to go back on, you're talking about the time required for things like crowd management and planning ahead, I mean, let's face it, look back on the tragic events of the last couple of years, this is a time more than ever, that we have to spend more time thinking about safety and crowd management. So, I don't think it's out of line that those costs would be going up, those types of change. So, I.
You're justifying it, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. I agree, Jim, I think that an accounting needs to take place, as we've done in the past, when it came to other fees, that we've assigned to certain things that happen in the town, where we actually look at, you know, how much it costs the town to actually review and do these things.
Well, it's gonna help cut down on two fifty fives, which is probably an end game.
A lot of what I have is, perfect example, what I would love, every chapter two fifty five, two fifty five, um, application to be, is Long Island Railroad. He sends us a book, he has his insurance, right, he has, he has no alcohol, he's, he's so thorough, it's like, oh, I'm done with him in five minutes, five minutes, he's done, every year, Don Fisher does the same thing.
But he's the exception, not the rule, I'm sure.
He's the exception.
So you make a profit off of him.
And, 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 and that's the other thing, if there's alcohol, you have to make sure there's all the tip, tips training is done, that everybody is up to date, that they have their corrals in place.
When, when I get an application, it's always missing something, the certificate of insurance is, it doesn't have enough, uh, uh, liability limits, it has, it maybe doesn't have liquor liability. Then they're scraping around, cause they don't have liquor liability, so they have to find it, um, when they have food, I need to ha- I need the food, the Suffolk County Health Department permits from all the food vendors, whether it's a vendor, or, you know, like a stand, or whether it's a, a coffee truck.
Food truck.
I need to get those, well, I, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm working on one now, well, they get, they're responsible for that, but yeah, you're the event organizer, you need to collect it from your vendors, and you need to give it to me, so.
So you're educating everybody, as, every time they do an event.
Right. Right, it's just, it, so it's like, it's like piecemeal, I get things in piecemeal, and, and sometimes the day before the event, I'm getting something.
Yeah, that's why I thought that we weren't gonna be taking any late applications at all.
Well, this is, this is what this discussion is.
Right.
So, so.
We can get rid of the late.
We can say absolutely no late applic- but then we have to.
Yeah, right. I would prefer that.
We have to do no late applications, because, you know, we know that people will come and petition the board members and say, oh, come on, please, just me, just me. I mean, is, is that really realistic of what you are going to do, because if it isn't, then we have to put a mechanism in here to, to allow that to have a late application.
Well, if you put it in place, it's a non-negotiable.
I think we need a mechanism, because I think over the period of time that I've been here, the number of times that have, of just what you said, where, oh, we forgot, oh, we had a new guy running it this year, and he forgot to do it, and it's something, could be the James Ford Carnival, something that you don't wanna say no to, uh, I think we need to have the application, uh, or the.
It could be ten years.
Right.
And she comes in.
So, so I thi- I, I personally agree, agree with you, I think there needs to be some sort of mechanism for a late application.
Yeah.
And it needs to be a, a mechanism that people don't wanna avail themselves of, um, because i- it's, it's, you don't wanna just have a small fee involved in it. So that it's, it's, you know, as a matter of course, well, if it's only fifty bucks more, it doesn't matter that I get it in in time or not, I think it needs to be a true, a true penalty for a late application.
Makes you stop them from doing it in the future.
Right, and, and, right. And ten dollars a day for two weeks, or ten business days, is, in my opinion, is not enough, that's a hundred dollars, and the application can come in two weeks, you know, two weeks late.
They come in late, I've got a set of ring.
It needs to be, as per the hourly rate of the employee that is reviewing it.
But everybody, there's.
Three hundred a month.
Everybody is, everybody's reviewing, so we'll get the hourly rate, and we can have the penalty fee be that much.
Yes, well, the late fee has to have more bite, you're saying, yes, I'm in agreement.
Laura, we, we also need to X out, uh, under the not-for-profit organizations on this one there.
Yes, yes, yeah, thank you, yes, we do, yeah.
And then, we were still on page four of twelve.
Oh.
In the.
Now we're back to the.
Four. So now, the, under two fifty five nine B, sorry, page four of, four. Page four of twelve, and where it's two fifty five nine, permit required application, and then, under B, it says, the town board at its discretion may provide an expedited review for a special events permit under this article, but I don't see anywhere in the fee schedule where it says expedited review, so we either need to change that language to say a late fee will be charged based on, you know, employees' hours to review the application, because.
I think that first we have to determine what an expedited review for a special, my understanding what an expedited review for special means they come in with the, within the timeframe, that they're supposed to come in, and they would just like an answer from the town board before they start selling tickets. So they have to come in with the required time period, but they, but, but they, but I, I agree, I agree.
And it needs to say that.
Yeah, we gotta worry about.
But, but they, they are asking the board to review it. And, so they can start selling tickets, so if they have a hundred and twenty day window, and they want it done at, you know, and that hundred and twenty day window, they want it done at day, you know, one oh, whatever, one twenty-one, or something like that, that's an expedited review, they want it done at the next board meeting, then there's, then there's a fee for, for doing that.
So what is the fee for that, cause I don't see the fee schedule for expedited review.
You don't know yet.
No, no, nothing.
I think you need to give that a little.
It'll have to be added.
Yep.
Added, added.
Okay. Okay, and I changed the, the filing from forty days, what it, what it was for the short form, it's B one to ninety days, it gives us three months. It's twelve weeks, it sounds like a lot, but it's not.
Is it enough time?
Um, I, I, I think so, I mean, we can always change it, but I, I don't wanna.
We can always make it less, we can always make it less if you have too much time.
Right.
So why don't we give it more time, if you think three months is not enough, because you're going up to seven hundred and fifty people.
Okay, but I give, if you go to the next one here, if it's for the, uh, more than a thousand, which we have to change that now.
So more than seven fifty?
Yeah, more than seven fifty, then it's a one hundred and eighty days, which is six months.
Okay, if you're, you've been doing this, so if you think that timeframe is realistic for those size events, then okay.
Yeah. I think it is. I can always, you know.
Now, it's seven fifty, but fewer than five, no, fewer than twenty-five hun- fewer than twenty-five hundred.
No, but. Right, right.
So you, there's more time and less people, and more money.
And then the last one is for twenty-five oh one to five thousand.
Twenty-five oh one to five thousand.
Okay. There you are, okay. So.
And for events with more than twenty-five hundred.
On page five, you're changing number three from twenty-five oh one to five thousand.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Two hundred and seventy days, that's a long time, I don't know.
But if you're having an, an event for nine months, you're having an event with twenty-five hundred people, that's a big.
That's a big undertaking.
That's a big undertaking.
And one of our big ones is that the country fair and the Polish town fair, are those pretty much our great big ones?
Yeah, country fair brings about twenty-five and ten thousand.
But we have a lot of events coming in that are much bigger, that are outside folks that are coming in, wanting to run events at different venues.
Are they that big?
Oh, yeah.
Jim, what, what'd you say the numbers were for the country fair?
Between five and ten thousand, depends on the weather, we had three last year. I don't know, we had the full concerts.
Full concerts.
We had the full concerts out at.
And what about the Renaissance Fair, that ended up shutting down, how many did they have there? They had quite.
Everybody tells you, you know, for you, oh, we had ten thousand people, yeah, yeah, three hundred people.
But I mean, I just meant that we started the, uh, process on that very early, I checked almost a year ahead of time, uh, cause we had a lot of agencies involved, and there were numerous speculums out there.
Yeah.
If we go to number C two.
C two.
Taken out one time and collected, you know how these waves?
Yes.
They, they wanna know, you know, well, at one time, I'm only gonna have this amount, but, you know, over the whole day, I'll have this amount? That should just come out, to use the copy, including organizers, and I don't know why, a couple of lines down, I put it one time and collected, that should come out, I think I meant to strike through it, and I underlined it.
You know what it might be, because, hold it, exactly, excuse me.
That should be stuff, but.
Yeah, I agree, good, they get out of there.
The only thing is, does this make, if somebody's gonna have, um, if they are having waves, and this is referring to their car, the spaces for cars, do they need to have spaces for the cars for, that, that's my only concern.
I would think so, I mean, that's site plan, I would.
Right, but like, say like you have some of these races, right, where they do do, say they're gonna have fifteen hundred people, but it is in, is in waves.
Right. Right.
Everything else, but their park, do they have to have parking for fifteen hundred people at one time? That's, that's my only, I think we need to check with, uh, with planning for that one.
Right.
Yeah, I think, we, she's trying to say that you're, I'm expecting fifteen hundred people, but there's only gonna be three hundred and fifty cars at any one time, on site, which is.
Yeah, the cars, but.
Changes quite a bit, how much, whether it's gonna be TCOs, or.
There is a, a question and a, a spot to fill in on the application for the number of cars, so they should fill that out appropriately.
Right, but, but if, if, we just, how does it, how do, how do we judge how many cars that, how many parking spaces they need to have?
We have. Number person on an acre is three hundred people per acre. Here it is, short form, long form, security, mission, short form, more than a hundred, ten, long form, animal, drawing, sanitary, parking area.
So, I think, so the second, every one time and collectively, I think that that allows us the flexibility in the second portion, I, I agree with you, that's.
Okay.
Cause I think what it's, what you're saying is, the expected number of automobiles and other vehicles intended to use the property at any one time and collectively.
Oh, automobiles, yes, okay.
So, so they'll provide us that information, so then we can use that for the determination.
All right, right, we'll keep that in.
Yeah, cause you were just saying what, you weren't, that's.
Right, it's for the automobiles.
Yeah.
Okay, here we have, just so you have, a plan and drawing showing the layout of any parking area for automobiles and other vehicles, and the means of ingress and egress to such parking area, such parking area shall provide one parking space for every four persons in attendance, and shall be in accordance with the fire marshal setback by law.
But I think that this allows it by giving any one time and collectively, it gives you that flexibility to make a determination.
Okay, that's where parking.
No, that, that, that second one should stay there.
That ain't happening, unless it's a drive-in.
Well, no, a lot of these, um, a lot of these runs and races.
Oh, yeah, they are.
They charge ten dollars a car to park.
Oh, that's why they, they.
So, you know, they've got, they've got a thousand people and they got five or six, seven hundred cars, yeah.
Two cars, possible. Yeah, I get it.
You know, it's.
So, I think that we should have like a sample sketch drawing, Craig, as to what you expect as far as a parking plan.
Well, usually, generally, it's part of the site plan that they submit, so we look at the overall, I wanna see where the parking is gonna be.
But I think that there would be fewer phone calls back and forth if we gave them a sample plan to show where the ingress and egress and the parking.
I, I do. Well, it's, it all depends on where the, the venue's, venue is. Some places have two separate ways in and out. You take Calverton, uh, Long Island Sports Park, correct? You know, they have the one road in and out, but if you go up to the four H camp, they come in one way, they come out another way, and then there's, they usually have a, a separate, uh, way for the ambulances to come in and out. So, it's, it's hard to design, which is one of the things that I work with them. I send them a list of what we're looking for, what the code is looking for, for the outdoor events pa- safety plan. I look at their site plan that is submitted. Most of the time I get it, I can't read it, so I ask them to send me a colored one separately anyhow.
Can't read napkins well.
Well, that's why I'm saying, like, you're saying, no.
You know, and, and it's.
It's more tailored.
Yes.
Right, but the definition says the location of all exits, so even if you just had a piece of paper that said, okay, average site, you know, and then you have.
Right. Okay, I, I can look at something and work.
Ingress, egress, you know, so that they know, like, an arrow is okay, or they know that the parking stool has to be ten foot wide by twenty feet long, and they have a hundred feet, so they're only getting ten spaces in there, so they're not just drawing lines on a paper. So, they know specifically.
Most of the time they show a field, they don't show how they're parking the main field.
Right.
Right.
Do you have, do you have a, a, an example of a site plan?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying, is that.
Yeah, this is what I usually get.
Yeah, so.
Difficult.
Yeah, that's hard to read.
So, yeah.
So, like I'm saying, is if you just even.
That's okay, nevermind.
Through the, through on that.
We have one here, Laura.
We do? Oh, good, okay.
They'll show you, I mean. That, um, you'll see, it says parking, and that's generally the way shown is, is parking. And then they'll show that here's the entrance, there's the exit, so it comes in and around this way.
I know, but if we're being specific with one space per four people, then we need to see where the spaces are, to make sure that they have enough, right?
I guess so, yes. I have not done it that way in the past, but we can, uh.
Because like Garden of Bees, with the garlic festival, and God bless, they're very successful, and there were people that were parked on the, you know, south side of Sound Avenue, and then running across the street, and I almost saw people get hit, and so they need to show that they actually have the onsite parking for the.
Hered usually.
People that are.
It's gonna be tough for you to do.
Right, and that's why she also is required to have a police there, and the police are also required.
That's gonna be tough for you to, looking at a site plan like that.
And trying to figure out, yeah, cause I don't have dimensions or anything, I was like that generally, so it's.
Right.
I'm saying, just a sample, like, you know, when you go to the building department and say, I wanna build a deck, there's a sample as to what the building department is expecting as far as what a plan should look like.
Right. I'll work with Laura and see if we can't come up with, uh.
I, I think that's just like the basic.
Do they have the basic again?
But you do have a list, right, that you give, that you give them?
No, you just attach it to the back of the application and say, this is a plan.
Do you wanna just share that with the board to just give a look at, and maybe that might be, might clear up some stuff?
Like those scored lines and.
Well, like what he just showed us, he said, is not acceptable, so rather than him picking up the phone and saying, the plan you gave us is not acceptable,
Right.
take a look at the sample that we gave you in the packet as to what you have to provide to us, it prevents them from having to make the phone call.
But we have to draw it up.
Why do you draw it up? It's their plan.
Okay, so we just give them a section of the code and let them.
Well, give them a sample, just say.
A sample of one maybe that's a, a really good example, that you can use, like maybe the railroad station, or, I mean, the railroad museum.
Right. Okay.
You have one that's done nicely to give them as an example to use, rather than you coming up with a blank form.
Right, right.
Okay.
I, I think.
Just something to show them.
I think what, I think, I think it's the point, all of the points that they need to address.
Mm-hmm.
Entrance, egress, parking spaces and things like that. So I think that that, and I think, Craig, that's kind of what you said, that you
Okay.
have a list of what it is that they need to have on the site plan when they, when they.
Yeah.
It would help them, because you have it in writing, but they still don't follow it.
It was also.
Right, so generally.
So if they see a visual.
In my review, I don't look, I mean, I glance at the, at the, um, the site that they do, but I don't look for ingress, egress, parking, I don't look for where bathrooms are.
And they go, oh, that's what they're looking for. No, but he does.
He does.
He does, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
You can be there, fit to us.
So that's why, you know, I'll look and see what I have, and we'll work together and try to get one to use the same type of food in the application.
It just might make it easier for Craig down the road.
Yeah, no, I guess it would, I'm sure it would.
That's the old version. Uh, I have a newer version, which I, again, generally email to them once I get to chapter two fifty-five and I review it, and I see that they're gonna need an event plan. Um, it talks about the requirements and the things that I'm looking at. Uh, Diane does also have some examples of site plans in here. Uh, and what I'll do is I'll work, work on something with Laura and Diane and update the packet.
Very generic.
Get that all in.
The application is gonna, going to be amended based on what we're doing here, so we're gonna advance the whole thing.
Right.
Right, and then you'll just detach a sample.
Mm-hmm. Yep, safety, outdoor safety.
I've seen this.
Okay.
Okay, and then if you go down to five, it says, "The name, address and phone number of the persons who will be engaged in the preparation of sale of food and a copy of their state and or county license permit." I have to beg for these. I have to beg for these, so, you know, they don't give them to me. I don't, I don't even get a list of food vendors. Can I have the list of food vendors? Okay, now can I please have the copies of their health department?
A, a question on this, for, for the food vendors, do they, do they, they, it's an ongoing, they have that information, so it's not that they need it for this particular event. It's something that's, that.
No, some are one day. They have an annual permit, so.
No, they have to go.
They have to get permits from the county of health, you gotta get like a one-day permit.
Yes. So how, how long are those good for, and, and how long do those take to get?
It depends what they ask for. If they ask for one day, or two days, or get one day. If they ask for a year, they'll get a year.
Could be just a one day. Right.
But the county, the county needs a lead time in order to issue those permits. I think they have to be in like, at least thirty days before the event.
They do. I think it's more, I think it's forty-something.
Okay, so, we, we need to.
And there's an expedited fee of seventy dollars if they do it in less than the time allotted.
Or, you need to pay more, right, right. They do.
Right, but what I'm saying is that you may wanna use what the health department requires, so in the application, if a food vendor, if you're having food vendors, Suffolk County Department of Health Services requires forty days, you know, the application will be filed within forty days, and we need it, you know, no less than fifteen days prior to the event.
Yep.
I have it here. I printed it out, actually.
Well, if they have to get it forty days before the event, I think, I think we should be at thirty-five, then on thirty.
Well, they're, the, the health department may get it forty days, but they're not issuing it for at least two weeks, three weeks, so.
That, that's, that, but that's, but that's, but that's what I'm saying. How far in advance can they have it issued? Like, can they have it issued, you know, sixty days in advance, and then we require thirty? So it, whatever, however long the health department has, but what do we want here in our town? So I'm just wondering, can they issue it further out?
They want at least fourteen days prior to the event in order to avoid late fees.
The, the county?
The county.
But for, for, for you, for our events that we have here, the number of events we have here, the amount of work it takes, what is the timeframe that we need to have that in? I mean, are we okay receiving these things fourteen days before, or do we want them thirty days before?
Fourteen is, is like, the last day.
But, but is, is, but that's what I'm saying. But, what is that sooner period that you would like to see it in, thirty days?
No, I think that's a little bit much. I, I think fourteen days will be enough.
Okay, so they need to provide it to us fourteen days before?
Right. Mm-hmm.
Or, they were not allowed to have the vendor? Will we accept it after fourteen days? Will there be a penalty involved here? What, how are we addressing that?
That's what I'm saying, so we need to go back and look at, you know.
It gets dicey, because the food guys a lot of times will hold off to do it last minute, because they're looking to see, is there another event that I can make more money at?
Right.
What's the weather going to be? They hold off, that's on them.
Yeah.
I get that, but that's where you're gonna get a little bit of backlog, I think, with the food guys, because that's what they all end up doing.
But I think if you, the fourteen days, I think that's not, that's not too far out.
No, I don't think that's too far out.
So fourteen days, and if somebody wants to go closer, then, then there becomes, because you have to drop everything you're doing to address this and chase them. Or whatever, so I think that there should be another, once again, that there's a penalty for not complying with what we're asking.
So, I think.
I think that there has to be a separate line on the application that says that they're having food vendors, and then you have food vendors.
They, they check it off.
Okay, so if they check off, then there should be something in parentheses that says, if you are having food vendors, the list must be submitted to make the application complete, and the food vendor permit from Suffolk County given to the town no less than fourteen days prior to the event.
Okay. We'll put that on the application.
So next we have food vendors, so, on the application.
And if, and what are we doing if they don't submit a part, within that fourteen day?
They don't, they don't have food.
Then the food vendor doesn't go there.
So, so are we denying them, are we denying them the ability?
Denying the food.
Are we denying the food, or are we gonna charge a penalty for the food to let them have it? What, what do you guys do?
Okay.
So, what do you guys?
Well, a scenario would be if, say, one, you're, you're having a burger fest, and one of your main burger trucks drops out, for whatever reason, you need to get another one in, or the, they need to get another one in there. You, I think you need a provision for them. Charge them more, yes, an expedited fee, or charge them a late fee, but I think there needs to be an avenue for them to do that.
I, I, I agree.
Yep.
I agree.
What, what do you want for the late fee? The county, Georgia seventy?
So then let's charge.
A hundred.
All right, a hundred. I mean, because, uh, these things that come in late, you know, if, 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 if you're not here, or you're off, and then trying to scramble to find somebody to get it all done. You've had me, you guys have called me, I've called you guys up, you know, I have this one here, and it, it's, it's chaotic.
But we shouldn't get things the day before the event, that's the whole thing.
No.
No.
I, I agree, I.
This should be well, weighed on in advance, so we don't have this scurrying around and waiting and, and, um.
Yes.
And just to let you know, there's two separate permits. There's a, a temporary event organizers permit that, I'm using a garlic festival as an example, that they have to fill out, and that needs to be in at least twenty-one days prior to the actual temporary food service, the people selling, that are attending her event, that are preparing the food, they have a fourteen day lead time.
Okay, good, so we're consistent, fourteen days.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, because I know when we were having Business Improvement District Management Association events downtown, and I know that it was very difficult to keep track of who had actually gotten their off-premise catering, or who had gotten their, so I think fourteen days is a good lead time. Because you're gonna have to have a tickler file on your desk where these are, you know, events that are coming up in chronological order that you still are waiting for paperwork for, so when fourteen days hits, you pull those files, and they're either done, or they're paying the late fee.
I put them in Outlook. It pops up.
Okay.
And reminds me, you know, when it's still.
I know, but not everybody has access to your Outlook.
No, no, oh, I see.
So if you're not here.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Then, n- nobody knows where you left off, or what's missing from a particular file, so.
Right. Okay.
That's why, I, you know how you have your stack that's in your fi- on your file cabinet, of all things that you're waiting for when it comes to covenants?
Yeah. Right.
So, the same thing with these two fifty-fives, where these are all the events that everything is in, those get put away.
I have them now, is that what you're saying?
And then a tickler file for the events that are for the month of October, so you have an orange folder that says October, November, December, January.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Right, 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 gotcha.
And then, as they complete all the paperwork, you pull those out, and they get put away, because everything's in there.
Right. Well, that's what I do, I just on the folders, but, yep.
I thought you said you did it through Outlook.
Well, I do, I type it in, and it, it's a reminder for me that I have to go to the file and look and, and see, or check if I got it. But I also have a pile on my desk, chronologically, you know, date-wise, of what's coming up next and what I'm still waiting for, and it's written right on top.
Okay.
I mean, I can change that anyway.
Well, let's go through this, and then, cause I think that's really the nuts and bolts of organization.
Yeah.
Oh, we, we need, we need, we need like a whole day on it. I can tell you, like, ah, this is, this is not the, the, the narrow conversation.
Okay, well, on page six, we didn't change anything.
Right.
You just crossed out the one time.
Hold on, let me.
Right.
Let me see if I got any notes.
So, on page six, under three, where it says, "A plan and drawing showing the size of the property, the zoning district in which it is located, the street, blah, blah, blah", then, under that, in parentheses, I think it should say, "See example provided in application packet." You know, just so that they know where to go.
Yeah.
We're just gonna put your cell phone number there.
You want that, you want that codified? You want that as part of the code?
It, it should be part of the application, the application itself. It should just be instructions on the application.
No. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Cause we're really just putting it.
Okay, that's right.
Applications.
The code, my gosh.
Mm-hmm. And then the, the next page we did was, um, oh, and number eighteen. It, it had, uh, "If any type of banners are displayed adjacent to a town, county or state road, the applicant shall include the size of the banner, location of the banner, and the date that it will be displayed, and submit approval from the appropriate", it only had county and state, and we need town, because banners across the street, they do get sign permits.
Okay.
So I added town.
Okay.
Okay, and then I also put in another paragraph, "Objection by the town clerk."
I totally agree with this.
Have the authority to reject any application that the town clerk finds incomplete. And then I said, "If a certificate of insurance is not received thirty days prior to the commencement event, then the application will be deemed incomplete and will result in the denial of the application." And that was what came out of last week's meeting.
Yep.
As the head requested.
Right, but, is the clerk going to be checking to make sure that they get the insurance in? Or once she finds it complete, and the only thing that they're missing is the insurance, then I think she kicks it over to you, right, so?
As soon as I get the insurance, as soon, if I get it, I send it to Carol, or Carol gets it, says, no.
The, this is, this is where, this is.
Well, you gotta pay. You gotta pay fifty dollar fee, right?
Yes.
This is, this is the part that who gets to approve the late applications. That's really what this is.
On top of it.
The reason the town clerk would reject something is because somebody just either didn't complete the application, so they give it back and say it needs to be completed,
Right.
or an application comes in outside of the window when they're allowed to submit.
Right.
So, are we, the, with, are, what do we do at that point? So somebody comes into the town clerk, they're, they're two months in before the event, does the cl- town clerk accept the application? Or does it become an appeal to the board, where they have to, have to send a letter over to the board to ask to be reviewed for the late application fee? So that's a decision that we need to make, because it's either we're telling the town clerk that they have the decision and the power to decide if they're going to accept a late application or not.
Well, this is incomplete applications.
Diane, are you comfortable doing that?
Yeah, we, we sort of already do it.
Okay.
We tell them that they.
Go see the supervisor.
That they're late.
Go see the supervisor.
We say they're late, and then they, we say, well, what can I do? And then we say, well, you've gotta get three signatures, so, but if we're not gonna.
You have to petition them. But, so this.
Whether we're doing that, it's, so, I don't know.
So this is for an incomplete application, but what about an application that does not come in within the timeframe? How are we, how are we addressing that? So, if an application comes in late, and we're going to accept late applications with a fee,
Mm-hmm.
there's an option that we might be able to do it, wh- where, who's, who's making that decision, and how is that being addressed?
Yeah, where is that in the code? About late applications.
Well, there's a whole thing on late fees.
Late applications.
Well, there's late fees, but somebody still has to accept the application and note it.
Well, if it's complete, if they wanted to pay the late fee.
Two fifty-five, twelve C.
But you could have an application that comes in late for twenty, for three thousand people, and, and, and then, and it always comes in at Friday, I'm gonna say at three thirty to four o'clock in the afternoon.
Yes.
Somebody's rushing in this application, they're outside of the window, and they're saying, well, my application's complete, um, but it's late, can you take it? And then they come down to my office, and I'm like, Friday, four o'clock, you know, so am I saying no?
No, you shouldn't be saying that.
This is, this is, this is your avenue to.
We've already told them no.
They, they've already been told no.
Right.
So, the, the, the question is, how does somebody appeal if they do not get in there within the right amount of time? Who, who is making that decision?
It should be a letter to the town, to the town clerk, which will be given to the town board, so that the town board can set it for a work session, determine the size and magnitude of the event, and then decide whether or not.
My goodness. It's my goodness.
Well, that's an option, we could, we could have that.
That's what I'm saying, is that.
Write a letter, appeal that.
And that's what we've been asking people to do, and then what they do is they call everyone up, and somebody writes up a resolution and walks it around. So, I just wanted to be in agreement what we're doing, so, so the mechanism, if somebody comes in, comes in with an application that is late, in order to be deemed, to accept that application by the town clerk, the town board must approve that submission to the town clerk.
Right, because we're gonna reach out to the fire marshal, who's gonna say, I have five weddings that weekend, and I can't accommodate this right now, or the police chief is gonna say, we have all of our DCOs out that weekend, so we have to, you know, when the applications come in and they're reviewed, you know, we.
Thomas Southampton has an appeal from denial of application or rescission permit code.
Okay, how do they do that?
They said, the chief, uh, the, the chief fire marshal, the chief police denies an application, which, that doesn't happen, which the town clerk,
Town clerk does.
for special event of permit, priority permit, or rescission of permit, written notice of such denial or rescission, and the reason or reasons for such determination shall be mailed by the town clerk by certified mail, return receipt requested to the applicant at the address providing the application. A copy of the notice of the denial or rescission shall be filed with the off-premise town clerk, and forwarded to all involved town, uh, departments. The denial of a permit application or the rescission of a permit may be appealed to the public safety commission.
But that is only, but that's, but that's not a late application fee.
Right.
That's somebody denying an event.
Right.
So that, that, we're talking about a late application fee, something that you would normally allow, had it come in on time, and followed the procedure.
Okay, now this is only we deny.
You got a person coming in here with an application for something of more than twenty-five, twenty-five hundred and one people, and they come in here more than sixty days late, they're applica- with the fifty dollars, that's forty-two hundred dollar application that you come in here and you consider.
We have one this week, I'm just saying, we have, we have one, we have one, we have one that came in this week that, that is, is in that category.
I think that's all of these, yeah.
My question is, I, I don't deny, I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that we won't, won't process the application and allow the event to take place, but I'm saying, how are we deciding whether we are going to process the application or not? So, do we want it to come before the town board?
I think that, maybe there should be, maybe there should be a form, so Diane says.
I think, I think. I think. I think eventually we won't.
So we put them.
But I think for the first year, we might have to, it's a training thing, it's a, you know, get you, get you to.
Or name for.
So, but, so Diane should say to them, we're not accepting your application, you're out of the window because it's too late to accept this application at this point?
Not because this is new.
So, what would you like Diane to tell this person?
I think that there should be a standard template form that Diane gives them right then and there, and says, your application is late, here's a form, it's addressed to the town board of the town of Riverhead, it says, my application for my special permit is ten days late, I, I had given it to the clerk, and she's saying that I have to go for an appeal before the town board. And then, we would distribute, Diane would email that to us, email to the fire marshal, to the chief, to anybody else that looks at these special target applications.
Park it into that date, if it takes us time, we'll make them write up.
And they, they file the appeal right there, on the, on the form.
And, and to the, and to the town board then would address it at a work session.
Right.
Yeah, well, after.
Or, or a town board meeting, but not individually.
After the fire marshal and the police chief and everybody reports back and says we have.
But they're not even, they're not even looking at the application until we decide whether we wanna accept the application or not.
It's not to them yet. It's not gonna go to them.
But I think that, to work, when, with the template form, that, because we want them to start looking at it right away, if we're gonna, like, waiver.
Let me ask you this, are we accepting the application, giving, because then you won't have any idea.
No, you're holding it in advance.
No.
No, if you accept that, if you accept that, if you accept that application, that's where it becomes a very gray area.
Right.
Uh, did I submit it, did I not submit it, are they looking at it, are they gonna tell me yes, are they gonna tell me no?
Right, no.
So I think the idea with the letter that says that the only thing you're asking is for us to look, to accept, physically accept the application itself, so I think that, that we need to decide that we're in.
I, I, I think, I think that's probably a good way to, if I come to an application, I know I'm late, um, you have the right to deny me, but I wanna appeal to the town board.
Right, so they fill out that.
So the form, I'm not, that's probably a good idea with a form.
I like that idea.
Can we stamp it pending, so at least it's clocked in at that date, so we don't hold on any further?
Well, just put on the form, I realize that the application can be rejected by the town board.
Well, I mean, the application can be pending, not approved, just pending.
But we don't even have, we don't even have to, we doesn't, we don't even have to review it, we may just look at the date and say no.
No, I wouldn't review it, no, I, and I certainly wouldn't send it to staff to review either, until we decide whether we want it.
Well, what are you reviewing, the application?
Exactly, if we don't have an application, we don't even know what, how many people they have proposed.
And once you take it from them.
Yes.
They, in their mind, they've submitted a thing.
So when you, but when you have them sign the template, and it says in bold letters at the bottom,
They get that all the time.
I realize that my application may not be approved because it is late, and because, you know, the town board decides and has the, you know, hold us harmless, that we may not approve your event.
Why don't we just have?
Do we have the authority to approve that at a work session?
I think.
I, I don't think so, but.
Has to be done at a.
It's not approving, we're not approving the event, we're not approving anything, the only, we, we, we set the application.
We're accepting the application.
We're accepting it, so, cause we're not really allowed to vote at work session on items, it would just be a matter of accepting or not accepting.
Right. Right.